September 22nd, 2015, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners is now in session.
Good morning, all. Would you please join me in prayer, please? Father, in the name of your Son Jesus, we thank you for this wonderful place that you bestowed upon us. Lord, we ask that you forgive us of our ministry. Lord, we ask that you be with this board this morning as it goes about conducting the business of the great people of Gulf County. Father, be with our law enforcement, our military, bless the great state of Florida and the United States of America. Lord, we ask that everyone here to get safely back home. We're sure looking forward to some a little bit cooler weather here. Lord, we ask this all in your precious name. All right, let's place the flag clear.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we're going to call to order regular meeting, September 22nd, regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. I want to take a brief moment to thank each of you for coming out today, taking time to come out. Any of you have any business before the board, as they are in the meeting for public discussion, simply raise your hand, be recognized, and you will be heard. All right, having said, we're going to address now to the consent agenda. And does anyone, come on in, sir. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda or the information packet? If you do, all right, having none, we will turn to the staff. Does anyone, any staff member have any questions?
Chairman, I do have-
Yes?
I have one revision.
Sure.
Um, I have an amended, uh, resolution for the budget adjustments. Um, I had left out one fund. It was mentioned in the top paragraph but left out in the details. So I would like to provide a revised resolution for your approval. It was for the, um, Oak Grove Water System Fund. It's closing out that fund.
Okay. Right, anything else? That it? We'll address that. All right, at this time, no, anyone, any other staff members? All right, we'll turn to the board. Commissioner Quinn, do you have any concerns with the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Michael Moore?
No, sir.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes, I just have one item to pull.
All right, what page, please?
Forty-seven through forty-nine.
Page forty-seven through forty-nine. Any other pages?
That's it.
Okay, we will address that when it comes to board discussion. I need a motion to accept balance of the, or to accept the consent agenda and the information packet excluding page forty-seven and forty-nine, which will be addressed later in the meeting.
With the revision.
To what?
With the revision, please, sir.
Oh.
With Ms. Herring's revision.
I make that with my motion.
Okay.
Uh, I move to approve it with her addition that she wanted to add to it.
Yeah, it is due, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, I second the motion.
All right, any further discussion? On the audience, the opposition, if an agenda passes four and oh, and we will address this page forty-seven, forty-nine later in the meeting. All right, Mr. Butler, we will start with you.
Mr. Chairman, this was perhaps the last on my list, but I figured I'd give it to you first because it leads into my, my first item on my list. Um, next Monday, September 28th, five o'clock, delegation meeting here in this room. Senator and representative are going to be here. Senator Munford, Representative Bashir is to be here to listen to anyone that has any, any comments. And I just want to say that first. They'll be here next, uh, 28th on the Monday, September 28th, five o'clock PM. The, uh, my first item on my agenda is SEABR, Community Budget Issued Request, something that we, we talked about jointly with the City of Port St. Joe in our meeting a couple of weeks ago. And, um, I had a meeting with, with the city manager, Jim Anderson. We're looking at things that Gulf County and City of Port St. Joe can jointly go in and submit a request for, for SEABRs. The, um, last year, we had placed a SEABR for Cape San Blas Sewer, Beacon Hill Sewer. I think we had put something in for Sheller and then the Lagoon, and then the entire Lagoon. But the city manager and I, we discussed, we've got a couple of things that the city would benefit from, and we would too. Um, if we could ask for, and each one of these, this first one is in the four million dollar range, Gulf Beaches Sewer, to put sewer out on Cape San Blas as, as a limited capacity sewer system only Cape San Blas. This would get a lot of septic tanks off the beach. Two, the second one would be, it's about four point four million dollar project two, Beacon Hill Sewer, um, we call it Gulf Beaches Sewer. It's about, well, just a few years ago, estimated a little better, two million, but now it's a little better than four million. Price has gone up on, putting these in the ground. But, um, those two, and then the, um, I have from Michael Dombrowski, our coastal engineer, a Southend Erosion Control Pilot Project, um, detail on what could be done at Stumpole. And it's something that there's been some, um, some conversations with the senator and the representative that maybe we'll get some money to, ten of about a million dollars to start a pilot project at Stumpole to slow the erosion down, to slow the current down. But I got three things on the, on the SEABR list. One would be Gulf Beaches Sewer. The second would be Cape San Blas Sewer, and the third one being Southend Erosion Control Pilot Project. And my recommendation to the board would be that we submit the three SEABRs to the senator and the representative.
All right, board members, you've heard from the administrator on this, what's the wishes of the board?
The move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Michael Moore?
I'll second.
All right.
I, I just need a clarification on the summary.
We've got a second. No, go ahead.
Mr. Butler, if I, I didn't quite understand your summary. I just want to make sure I understand. There's three items. One is the Gulf Beaches or Cape San Blas Sewer, and one is the Beacon Hill Sewer, and the other is the, um, Stumpole Pilot Project.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion with the board members? Anyone in the audience, any concerns over this? Opposition to Commissioner Michael Moore's motion? Motion passed four and oh.
Mr. Chairman, don't have it today, but it's forthcoming. Also dealing with the City of Port St. Joe. They have identified a grant they'd like to go apply for, for the lighthouse, and they just need a support letter from the county commission. If the chairman can sign it when it comes in.
Want a motion on that, or is it just information?
We just need your signature. Not necessarily a motion.
All right, thank you.
Uh, also talking with the City of Port St. Joe, talking about the building department services. Today, they have a contractor doing their building. This something came up in our joint meeting. And, um, we're looking at the possibility of Gulf County taking over the inspection services for the City of Port St. Joe. And I got some, I have some points I would like to recommend to you. My understanding is that today, the building department in Port St. Joe, the contract building department, charges more for permits than Gulf County does. And so my recommendation to the board is that we, we deal with the City of Port St. Joe through a interlocal agreement, that the attorneys we work up, that the permit rates will be the same. There's no difference in what county rate and the city rate would be. Um, I did understand that they made, they, they picked up like five thousand dollars last year off permits. That's what the City of Port St. Joe got as revenue off the permits. Not a lot of permitted activity going on in the city. I didn't have preliminary conversation with George Knight, our building official, and, and just like, especially after we get through tonight's budget meeting, we'll have, um, the ability to handle there, because it's not a whole lot of building activity going on in the city. But if we could sell the permits at the same rate, um, we got in some detail I did with, with Jim Anderson, that the difference in the building permit and a plan review fee, the radon fee and the building inspector certification fee, and the, the, um, land planning review fee. So if Gulf County could remit to the city the same percentage that that contractor is, only for the building permit fee, not the, not the, um, plan check fee, because typically, you know, the rule is if you got a hundred dollar permit, you got half of that, fifty, uh, fifty dollar plan check fee. Then by law, we have to, um, collect some radon gas tax and also some building inspector certification tax, like a, like a penny, a percent on each one of them. So my recommendation is, is the board, I can offer to the City of Port St. Joe that we run their department for them, and we was remit to them eighteen percent of the building permit itself, nothing else. And, um, and we do it forty hours a week instead of a couple of days a week. And, um, and we would not be handling the planning board, their planning board, and we will not be handling the code enforcement. But just recommendations to the board, and if I could go through it just one, one time. Permits same rate as county permits. Uh, the availability of the building department, forty hours per week. Uh, the county shares eighteen percent of permit fee with the city. Um, the share would not include plan check fees, building inspector certification fees, radon gas fee, and land review fee. Um, Gulf County would perform the, the, um, land planning reviews. As a permit come in, and for setbacks and that type thing, for various, that would have to go back to City of Port St. Joe for their planning board to handle. So if, if the city, you know, could agree with that, and you agree with that, well, I think the contract is up until I'm in early December. And we'll bring it back to you for a interlocal agreement.
Butler?
If you can give me permission to go forward with it.
Been through a lot there, and, uh, that word fee, 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 I don't like that word too much, you know, just what's it gonna, bottom line, what's it gonna cost me out of my pocket? That's what everybody wants to know. But anyway, why don't we, uh, my suggestion to the board, and we'll go the board, the direction of the board, is that, uh, that our attorney, Mr. Gibson, sit down and see if we can condense this thing down a little more and get it in layman's terms, and, uh, some, put some numbers out there. Look at it, bring it back to the people here. But the, uh, the, uh, I guess the building codes for the city and the county is the same. It's all the building codes.
Identical.
It can be, uh, one set of rules here and one set there. They all follow the same rules. Am I correct there, Mr. Knight? Thank you, sir.
What this would do is, is make one, the same permit fee countywide, because we already doing city we want. It would actually lower, my understanding, it would lower the permit fees in the City of Port St. Joe.
People in Port St. Joe's fees would come down.
It would, it would come to ours, whatever, if ours went up, theirs would go up too, but it'd be the same as ours.
Okay, well, that's fair enough, okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um-
Was that it? Right on. All right, come on over here.
Okay, so you, I think you just answered one of my questions. You said we'd have the same fee. So we wouldn't go up, but the city would come down to our rate for the fees. So, you know, without looking at all the details, because, you know, we're just beginning this process, what I'm concerned about is that our building department, we're, we're taking on this effort to try to help the city, and I'm all about helping the city, but not at the cost of the county taxpayers. So if we have to remit eighteen percent of the permit fees for the same work that we do in the county where we don't have to remit any fees, I don't see where it makes sense to the county. And if the city already has the fees at a higher rate, it seems to me that if they maintain that rate, wouldn't that help towards this eighteen percent? I, I'm, I'm not sure that I completely understand why we would take on more inspections with our folks to make less money off of them. And I, I don't think we make much money off of them to start with. I think it kind of covers our cost if we make anything. But I'm concerned, we have, our, um, building department is clearly busy, which is, is a great thing. And we do want to help the city. But if we have to remit eighteen percent to the city, I, I think that we need to maybe have that in the rate for the city. I, I don't know why they would come down and then also expect us to remit. I just want to look out for the county taxpayers.
Mr. Knight, do you compensate the city of Weewee Hichka? No. So all the building permits that sold within the city of Weewee Hichka, the county retains. For your services, we retain all the monetary. Good point, Commissioner.
May I make this point, Mr. Chairman?
For now.
Okay, all right.
And, and I just want to throw this out there, you know, here's what disturbs me about, about the city. In one way it does, in, in one way it don't. You know, you pick up the paper here and, and, and the county, we work hard to try to keep our taxes in line, our, our budgets in line. Well, it looks like this year, we're ending up with a tax increase, you know, slightly, probably at the end of the day. These are Port St. Joe haven't, haven't raised taxes in years, in years. They're needing roads being paved. They're needing sewer service lines run. Uh, so there's a lot into this, the way I see it. I mean, I'm all about lowering taxes as much as possible, but we have to keep these services going, you know. And so I put that into the equation with this building department, you know, the building department issue. And, you know, I'm with you on that. You know, if we're, if we're going to do the work, we should get paid for it, all in mind. And, uh, that's the way I feel.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I, I guess one suggestion would be that we stay at our rate, and whatever the city wants to have remitted back, they would add to the rate for the city rates. And then they can answer to the city, um, the citizens of the city, that they have put an up charge on the, the, um, service that the county provides in order to come back to the city. We're providing the service, and I believe that we should get what we charge the, the citizens of the county. We should get the same thing from the city. I don't have a problem really with us providing that service to the city, provided that we get the same amount of money that we get when we provide that service to the county.
All right, Mr. Butler, you've heard from the board, and I think-
Okay.
The question is, for the board here, for you to proceed with, uh, talks, let's say, uh, with attorneys, and, uh, I think you've heard some of the, uh, concerns of the board here. They're very valid concerns. Meet with Mr., uh, what's his name?
Jim Anderson.
Yeah, Jim Anderson. You can, oh, you can pass this on if we do have some concerns there, all right?
Okay. Yeah, just, just, just a comment.
Now, let me go back to one other thing here, and I, I agree one hundred percent. We do not want to take on their code enforcement. Strictly with the building stipulations, and you come back to this board, or back to us, and, you know, okay, Mark, is that agreeable with, is everybody pretty much there that we go ahead then? Will you proceed then?
Okay.
All right, sir, what else?
Okay, just a comment. Well, Gulf County took over the City of Port St. Joe's building inspections the first working day in January of nineteen ninety-three. And we, we, we took them over, and we charged the same rate, although a round trip from here anywhere in Port St. Joe, a round trip back here is two miles. Might be fifty miles somewhere else in the county. And that was part of rationale. But, um, and, and, and we run it, we did it, until, uh, the first city manager in Port St. Joe decided he looking for a revenue stream. And, and I was, I personally was not in favor of it then. But, um, the only rationale would be, if you take it, and we tried to, to help pay some inspection, would be, you don't have to go too far, about a mile in the direction you, you had inspection. But, and I don't disagree with what the board is saying, that the, um, we, I like one permit fee. The first time in nineteen ninety-three, Weewee, Port St. Joe and Gulf County all had the same building code. We actually had three building codes, three different building codes, and we had, um, had three different rates. We got one rate. Makes it a lot better for the contractors.
All right, thanks, sir.
Okay.
What else?
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, my next item, and I think I'd probably best speak on this. I see Ms., uh, Ms. Pat Harmon is on the agenda, and it's about a purchase of a, well, I was going to talk about a purchase of a lot on Cape San Blas, but let me hold that until she speaks, then I'll, I'll add on to it.
We'll do.
That's all I got.
All right, thanks, sir. While we on that subject, uh, remember, the twenty-eighth, I think that's the next Monday, if I'm correct, at five PM, Senator Munford and Representative Bashir's will be here. And so please come out. If you have any concerns, they come down, and, uh, they like it better when we got some people. So if you're not tied up coming, also with us today, over, saying over here, young man I've known a long time, Alex Quintana, he is with Representative Gwen Graham's office. And what time today will you have your meeting down at the fire station in the City of Port St. Joe, Alex?
Eleven to one, Mr. Chairman.
From eleven to one. So any of you, if you have any concerns, any questions with our United States government, uh, you want to address it before the, uh, Congresswoman, uh, Graham, there's a young man, and he will convey the message on to her. Thank you, Alex, for taking time to come be with us this morning and being in Gulf County. Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
First item I have, uh, in your consent this morning, you all passed a resolution that has been proposed by yourself, Mr. Chairman, with regards to the FQHC, um, accepting the recommendations of your community stakeholders. Um, in furtherance of that, in passing that resolution of support this morning, um, the past six months, those community stakeholders, um, had gone through the process of evaluating and vetting, and ultimately making a unanimous recommendation to this county commission in supporting one of the applicants for this FQHC, HERSA grant. Uh, after the, today you adopted consent resolution, the next step in the request of the applicant was that the county acknowledged a space sharing agreement for the facility at the health department, uh, both county buildings. Um, as they move forward and submit this application, I just wanted to ask the permission of this commission through a vote to authorize the chairman to acknowledge that if they're awarded the FQHC, that the health department is going to arrange a sublease agreement with them to occupy the same space that our FQHC currently operates out of. Is your facility, the county's facility, health department's occupied this facility, and come this spring, when a FQHC third party comes in, they're going to utilize this space for the three-year grant. Um, so I'd ask for a conditional approval. We'll review the final lease agreement, but in terms of the application, I'd ask for the county to authorize the chairman to sign that acknowledgement.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bryan. Do I hear a second?
Second in motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Quinn. Board discussion. Anyone in the audience, any concerns, any discussion? All right, uh, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Can I vote?
Yes, sir, you're, you, yes.
On the FQHC.
Yeah, to, to address your, um, your question, uh, this six-month process I spoke to, and there's a few of the community stakeholders here. We have Mr. Willie Ramsey that's joined us this morning, Mr. Roger Hall's here, Ms. Marshall Player, um, and I just wanted to thank them all. And I know, Mr. Chairman and the administrator, you've all participated in this six-month process that culminated in that resolution today, but this is that next step. But yes, you can participate in that.
All right, thank you, sir. Is any objection to the motion? No objection, the motion passed four and oh.
Mr. Chairman, the next one is just a real quick, brief, um, litigation report on two different items. One, the distribution from your BP litigation has been received by the county and has been provided to the clerk's office to be placed into the, uh, general funds for the county. The second, uh, litigation report was with regards to your St. Joe music collection. You had authorized action against that. Um, in working with the new owner of the business, we were able to satisfy that collection of that amount. And that money's also been returned to the county as well, okay? Uh, the next one is a follow-up to yesterday. We have several hearings today for the Planning and Development Review Board. In the general discussion yesterday, uh, Mr. Knight had come up and addressed an issue with the planning department, I'm sorry, the planning board, and asked for some recommendations to come forward with today. Um, in speaking with George, I just wanted to address a policy issue with this commission with regards to RV permitting. As you all know, you adopted the ordinance. He's issuing RV permits to be issued within our coastal corridor. With regards specifically to home, applicants that want to build a home on their parcels along this corridor, they're coming into the building department and asking for that hundred and eighty-day permit that you've allowed under your ordinance. And then the policy question was if they've met all the building department requirements and the planning department, uh, George and his staff want to know that they can issue these RV permits without a formal application to the planning board and come before you all. It's in your ordinance. It was written so that you could issue that six-month permit so they could live in the RV while they build their home. Uh, he wanted to know he had the policy approval from this commission that he can issue those permits for the first six months. If they don't make progress, or they're not meeting their inspection schedules, he can come back and encourage them, or direct them to go to the planning board and then come before you all for a renewal for another six months. Right now, that's what they would request, and that's the recommendation of both your planning board and the building department, to give them the ability to issue those permits for the first six months.
So are you looking for a motion-
I am.
-to approve that?
Yes, sir.
And I, I did attend the PDRB meeting and heard the discussion, and, um, I, you know, I will make that motion to approve that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Bryan?
Second in motion.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Uh, we open for old discussion, and let me, uh, implement one thing. A lot of the contractors, they have work trailers, that they keep their equipment, special tools, and when they come in to build in a home, sometime they'll leave their trailer there on site till they get through with the home, and then they move everything. And that's, that's what this is about. Try to convenience the contractor, convenience the builder. But they won't be, it's, as in permanent, as it's stated, Mr. Knight will monitor this very closely. It's abused, he will take the proper actions through code enforcement to handle it.
And, and he will assure that there is progress being made, yeah.
Yeah. The home is being constructed, it's moving within the timeframe. All over, clean it up, plant you some flowers, and get on the tax rolls, we'll meet you. Uh, anyway, uh, the motion's on the floor. Anyone else in the audience have any concern before we, all right, I'll call for the motions. Any opposition to Commissioner Bryan's motion? If not, motion passed four and oh. All right, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the other issues I have are some of the, uh, department heads and staff, so I'll just reserve the time until they have questions later on. Thank you, sir, that's all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Hammond? Have anything, Mr. Sumner?
No, sir, please.
Thank you, sir.
Nothing right now, all right.
All right, Sheriff, we'll go ahead and get you right now. Come on in. And it keeps, uh, keeps peace in the county. We got to recognize, you know, too. Thank you for the job you did.
Well, this is a good positive thing. First thing I want to, uh, thank Commissioner Bryan and all the people involved in getting the, uh, White, uh, White City Boat Ramp, um, in order. We've got our bass tournament, uh, coming up next weekend to benefit the Sheriff's Youth Ranch, and looks like everything's shaping up real good out there. Thank you so much for that. Also, Mr. Chairman, I need to call you out, sir.
I do.
On a good thing. Uh, Florida Sheriff's Association, um, is a, uh, organization that keeps the sheriffs, uh, going and, uh, provides us with our training, um, also assists us with legislative affairs. And, uh, we're happy to have, uh, many members throughout the state. Over seventy thousand business members as part of the Sheriff's Association, and you being an honorary member, and, uh, recently received, uh, uh, indication that you've been an honorary member for forty years, and I'd like to present this plaque to you.
All right. Forty years.
Says, uh, Florida Sheriff's Association, distinguished service award, presented by Mr. Ward McDaniel, with sincere thanks for loyal support and honorary member of the Florida Sheriff's Association for assisting in its continued efforts, um, to go out and best possible law enforcement, uh, for the citizens of the state of Florida. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chairman. Briefly here, thank you again, Sheriff. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to belong to an organization, this is the one. They do not solicit money. It's a one-time, you pay once a year, and they give, it's, I think it's twenty-five dollars to be a member. And they, they give you, every month, you'll get in the mail a nice little brochure with children in it and explaining. And, and our sheriff right here, I see him in it a lot, the sheriffs around. But this is to help children. We've had children right here in Gulf County that just went down, and, and a lot of children that was going down the wrong road was turned around because of the Florida Sheriff's Association. Law enforcement loves our children. They love all of us. But I'm going to stay with this till I guess I draw my last breath, because I feel it's an honor. And I'll put the sticker on the back of my car, and I got a big one that's, I got to put on my car now, I said forty years. That's a, I wish I could have had sixty in it. But thank you again, Sheriff. Come up with money and get in that organization. All right, uh, we was coming, thank you, Sheriff. Come on around. Ms. Norris?
I've thrown you off, I'm not a player.
Yeah, yeah, that's all right, but if you want to, I, okay, thank you, dear. Mark?
Good, thank you.
Joe? Sure, come on up.
Okay, I guess, as you know, we got permission from DEP to purchase an excavator and a couple of pumps from the escrow money in order to start landfill closure. And just because this is our first foyer into the escrow payment system, I want to make sure all the bases are covered. I have a Deuson DX300 that we're purchasing, 204-767-25. It'll be paid out of a solid waste account and then reimbursed from escrow. All right, this was purchased on the sheriff's list.
That too, Ford, you're talking money there.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I like to keep up with the dollars.
This is a big, big excavator. It's over 60,000 pounds. So just to make sure all bases are covered, I'd like the board to approve that through a vote.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Macklemore, second by Commissioner Brian. Mr. Quinn, you have any discussion on it? Mr., I have a question as to on this. Now, this machine, Gulf County, we don't have anything to haul it up and down the highways this big. What do, when we get through, what are you going to do with the machine, just for the people out here?
Uh, we may have to hang on to it for a year before we can sell it.
Your, the intentions are us to sell this machine?
Intentions is to sell it and for Gulf County Public Works to use the money to fund a piece of equipment that we can get up and down on the road.
You think you can sell it for $204,000?
I don't.
You know you can.
I don't know, but I, I would not be surprised if we couldn't get more.
More than that.
Which brings to mind an enterprise, but never mind.
I know, you always figured on how to spend the money we get there. Okay.
Okay.
Now, we got a motion on the floor. Second, yeah, any, anyone in the audience? All right, is any opposition? Motion? If not, motion passed four and oh. Okay, Mr. Downford, next.
All right, the small county grant, you know that every year I apply for a small county grant. Well, this year, I did not get an application. They did not send out an application, they send out, sent out the grant work, the budget narrative that you have to fill out. I finished that up. In addition to that, they're only promising us half the grant until January. Apparently, there was some kind of glitch in the wording or something, and the rest of the funds will not be available until January. I'm fairly certain that we're going to be funded the whole $90,909.
What you just said is from October 1, fiscal year October, starting October the 1st through December the 31st, we will only receive half?
Yes. What they're saying is that they have to put it back before the legislature in January.
There's no guarantee on the second half, then, or?
There are no guarantees in life, sir.
Well.
Uh, I, I don't, I don't think that they're going to go against all the small counties for $45,000 per county when, when they've had this program since 94, which really bothers me that after all these years, they would make an error in it. But errors happen. Now, I said all that to say this, I have a budget already. My budget is for $90,909, and I am strongly anticipating that we will be made whole. I am paying for the small quantity generator report that we have to have mandated by the state, which the state used to do this. They put it back on the counties to do it so that they could look good and cut their taxes and raise ours. I can pay for it off the grant, that's $4,000. I'm also going to purchase an E85 excavator. I've told some of you all about it. It's a small track excavator, rubber track excavator, that we can get around the ditches, we can get it to pick up debris, we can even cut roadsides with it if we have to by changing the attachments. The total amount on the grant will be $86,909 for that.
Of this $90,000 grant?
Yes, we're going to put about $5,000 with that out of Public Works funds and purchase some attachments that make this a very useful piece of equipment.
And that, and... Okay, let me hold just a minute, Joe, let me go here to Commissioner.
Is this a solid waste grant now? Is this is?
Yes, sir.
The money's?
This is a solid waste grant.
And this ties in with the landfill, just trying to get it closed, the whole nine yards, or?
No, sir. This is a solid waste grant that evolved, this is the Small County Solid Waste Consolidated Grant. It evolved out of all the grants that we used to have 22, 23 years ago.
Okay, so the $90,000, basically what you're using it for then is just equipment purchase?
For the most part, yes.
For the most part?
Yes.
If we need, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, if you have any questions, please, because I want to turn that in as soon as I get back. If I could get the board's approval on this in order for me to send this grant narrative back in today.
Go move, Mr. Chairman. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore.
And I'm going to second, and I'm going to say that, you know, we need to support Public Works, and, and this is what the folks in this county need, is the services that we provide through Public Works, and we have got to bolster up our Public Works Department.
But here, here's what's happening over the years.
Yeah.
Over the years, I've sat here and we fought, we fought these budgets for years trying to keep our taxes down and this, that, and other, and, and we have pulled and we have drained Public Works Department over there. We just about don't have a Public Works Department anymore. But we need to start trying to rebuild that and get it back up to where we can provide some of these services.
Mr. Macklemore, one of the pieces of equipment you had asked about, remember the old mow trim? This has a flail mower, we can use just like a mow trim. That's one of the pieces of equipment that we're going to use.
Well, Joe, I'm out about in this county, when you, a piece of equipment spends, you see it more in the shop than you do out here servicing, it's time to address that issue.
Yes, sir.
So anyway, we've got a motion by Commissioner, yeah, Mr. Macklemore? Second, Commissioner Brian?
Yes.
All right, any further board discussion? Quinn, anything? Anyone in the audience? Was there any opposition to Mr. Macklemore's motion? If not, this motion passed four and oh.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Have a good day. Mr. Paul, good morning to you, sir.
Morning, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you.
There's one thing in your consent, you passed the submission of the annual reports for ship, and I presented you this morning an email I received yesterday afternoon where we need an additional certification for the fiscal year 1314. What they did was they cut us by a year in the amount of time we have to expend the funds, and that's why I've been kind of coming before you pushing to get this money expended. And we need an additional closeout certification, which I've attached this morning that I would, no, sir, it's this one.
We got some in here up here. Okay, I got it.
Uh, you're actually signing the certification that you approved of the consent for all three fiscal years that we're reporting. I just need the additional certification for the closeout year of 1314.
All right, motion for the additional certification.
Sir?
Got a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Ship? Not, no opposition? Motion passed four and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The other one in front of you is the memorandum. The reason this did not make the consent is because we opened the bids yesterday.
Talking about this one now?
I'm talking about this one.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we got a pile of it. I guess, there it is, there it is.
Just think if I'd have put that in the consent, that'd have been another 15 or 20 pages. My, my recommendation here, sir, is Mr. George Knight and I went over these bids extensively yesterday, and as it works out, I would recommend approval that we award the bids to the low bidders, and it's ironic how it worked out, but of the three bidders we had, each of them actually bid at least low on one of the projects, and each of the contractors will each get one of the projects. So I think we're, you know, it's, it's great that they're being competitive, and it's great that we're able to award them to the three contractors that are currently approved by the ship program. I would recommend approval that we award these bids to the low bidder.
Question. Are these contractors local?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. All right, why don't we just run over them for the public out there?
Okay, the, the three contractors are Gulf to Bay, Crest Enterprises, and Raymond A. Drives Back LLC. They're all local contractors.
Go move, Mr. Chairman. All right, motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Other board discussion? Anyone in the audience? All up, before we vote here, I want to thank you for moving this along here and, and trying to help these good people. There's a lot of people out there that need, I personally want to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Well, you actually have two in District Four and one in District Three that will be doing out of these projects.
Well, that's great.
With more to come.
Good, thank you, sir. All right, is any opposition to the motion? Not, motion passed four and oh. That's great.
Thank you.
Now, if y'all don't mind, I'm going to move some of this stuff to the back. Okay, uh, let's come on around. Mr. Whitfield, you're next.
I've got a financial report for you. My collection is down this last month of August, $70,127.98, which still gives us a monthly average of $80,815. We always, our collection's up through August, is up $104,834 from what it was this time last year.
Up that much?
Yeah. If we, if our last month comes in at 55 to 60,000, we'd be in a break-even deal as far as our total revenue coming in.
And what kind of money we talking about there?
Uh, right now, we're sitting at $998,000.
We're bust a million.
Uh, we'll be $1,054,104, which is our budget. I also want to update you on the ambulance we had recently involved in an accident. I got some information this morning where the adjuster's going to total it out, but the problem is the market value of that ambulance right now is $20,000. So the most we're going to get out of it is probably $20,000.
What does a new one cost?
A new one is, uh, we're not going back with the big ambulances that we have now. A new regular-sized ambulance is between $130 and $150. You can get a new remount, which is somebody's old box remounted on a new chassis, like a new ambulance, for about $100,000. The box we have could be remounted on a big Ford frame, Ford chassis, but the cost will be about $130,000, and then we'll write back to big trucks again.
You buy an ambulance cheaper, you can take this box and re-chassis.
Yes, yes.
And Mr. Houston, does that include stripping out all of the equipment and reusing?
That's reusing all our movable equipment. There's not much built into the ambulance. All expensive equipment is just portable sets in it.
Ladies and gentlemen, just a few years back, we were $800,000 in the, it shows you right here with some management, time and some patience and get on the right track. Went from $800,000 in the red to we've picked up a million dollars, and we're just about out here in ambulance services. That's rare, that's rare.
We're going to try to get you some proposals on how we might address this, but I wanted y'all to think about it, too.
And you're saying the insurance only covers $20,000?
The county has a $10,000 deductible. The lady that hit us is going to be at fault, so whoever's insurance is going to pay the retail value of that ambulance, which is only $20,000.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure. And the reason, one reason for that is because these ambulances, the chassis manufacturer's out of, out of business. The one that made the box and the ambulance is also out of business, so you can't get parts for them.
But who determines the retail value?
The insurance adjuster. He looked at Nationwide as what the going rate is.
And do we have to take that, or can we?
Uh, don't.
No, it's subject to review and, not an appeal process, but it's also subject to an evaluation.
Because I, I would say their first offer is probably not their best offer.
But the bottom line is, we're not going to get near enough. Bay County just bought, I believe it was eight of these ambulances from a county down south, just like these, for $20,000 apiece. So they don't have any value on them, they're just too obsolete and too big.
Okay, let me recognize Commissioner Macklemore here, he has a question. You have the floor.
Excuse me, we might want to get into this. This is one of the services that we have to provide throughout the county. We're down on ambulances. Uh, we're going to have to buy an ambulance.
He's about three.
Bottom line.
Our newest ambulance is an '07 model.
But you're down on ambulance now.
Yes, but now we have elderly ambulance down there parked with the two in St. Joe as a backup if we have to get into it. It will function, but our whole fleet is getting deteriorated. My, my maintenance budget is way over what we had budgeted.
Can we do this?
You have the floor.
We're going, we're going to have to start building this up. Luckily, we've done a good job of managing this year. We had a break-even point. That's great news. That's the first time that's ever happened since I've been on this board that I can remember.
Now, I want to, uh, comment on that, too. Our break-even includes the $36,000 contract with Mexico Beach.
And?
And the $70,000 for your fee, which is, is not just a gift to me, it's runs that we don't get paid for.
Another service.
We take a lot of people from Bay, from Sacred Heart out that doesn't have insurance, and we take a lot of people to injure the hospitals without insurance. So that is, is not just giving you $70,000, we've earned it, my money we're not getting.
Listen, if I'm sitting in this chair and I get sick at my home and I call you, I want you to be able to respond. I'm going to sit right here today and I'm going to support, and I will put this in a motion that you go out, you purchase us one ambulance at low bid price. I will put that out today, because this is something we're going to have to bite the bullet on.
Well, I need to get one.
We're going to have to do it.
On this, too, because...
Y'all work it out. I don't care, I just want you to respond.
And I, I...
Let me recognize it, oh, you through, Commissioner, let me recognize it.
And, and I will second that we need to get the low bid, we need to do it properly, we certainly need the ambulance, and I'm glad that we're going for the smaller ambulances other than the large. But I also want to say that we need to be aggressive. It's, it's two separate issues. We need to purchase the ambulance, but we need to be very aggressive with that insurance company for the payment back for totaling out that ambulance, and that is something that we can do. We need to push back. Now, they're going to try to pay as little as possible, that's their job, so we have to be aggressive with that payment. And it is two separate issues, one doesn't depend on the other.
Ladies and gentlemen...
The lead time on these ambulances, about six months.
Yeah, here's a situation, and you need to know this, great people of Port St. Joe and South Gulf, you're down to two ambulances. One of those ambulances, there is just hardly a day, sometime two or three times a day, it's transporting a patient, so you're down to one ambulance. When it rolls out, you have to shift people from Weewee Hitchcock with ambulance down here to help fill in this void, so we need this ambulance. There's times, I don't know, it's ironic, you'll get, you won't have a call, and all of a sudden, you'll get two within 10 minutes.
Oh, no, we have had.
Yeah, we've had three, just bam, 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 like that. So it, we've got to do this to protect this end of the county. I mean, you know, I said, "Man, we're looking good, we're doing good," and boom, anybody want to go around and look at, the whole front end is... wanna go around and look at, the whole front end is knocked down from under. Got hit, they made to go this way, not sideways, and that's what happened to that one. But, Mr. Whitfield, we will, uh, we've gotta address this for the people.
Do I need a, do I need to identify where we're gonna need to pay this from?
Yeah.
Okay, we just received a four-hundred-something thousand dollar check. Correct?
BP settlement on it.
Take it out of here. It won't come out of the, out of the tax, out of the tax base. Take it out of here.
Have anything else?
That's all.
All right, now, make the motion. Ryan, leave the second on there. Want to include that in your motion, where the money comes from?
Yes, absolutely. Take it out of there.
Come out of that BP where the settlement.
BP funds.
Well, it's for the settlement where we wouldn't go after them for more. Okay, I know where it's coming from.
But it's for the people of Gulf County.
All right, good deal. Yeah, we gotta take care of our locals. All right, any other discussion on the board members? Anyone there? Was there any opposition to the commissioner's motion? If not, four and oh. Mr. Whitfield, you're very familiar with this. I don't know if you're gonna buy from Horton or Excellence or who.
Just put it out for bid.
You just have to bid it out and hope for the best. But you're going to, you're going with a commercial chassis we're talking about, ladies and gentlemen.
Talking about Ford.
Chevrolet, Ford, possibly Dodge. We're not going with a Mercedes or something that is gonna cost us. Okay, we're gonna keep it simple. All right, thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Whitfield? All right, come on, Ms., uh, Jenkins.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, on April fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, you awarded bid number fourteen fifteen dash thirteen, um, for beach grooming services to coastal parasail. There, um, have a day rate of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, um, with alternate hourly rates for smaller projects. The contract period is from January one, two thousand and fifteen, through December thirty, two thousand and eighteen, and I'm requesting permission for the chairman to execute the contract upon approval of the context by Mr. Novak.
But we've, we've already approved this?
It was awarded, and the, the contract has not been fully executed.
Awarded in April?
Yes.
And there's no new issues, no outstanding issues?
No, in fact, we've, it, um, we've only cleaned, um, three or four times.
So, Mr. Novak, do we need another vote if we've already approved the award of the bid? I mean, wouldn't it follow that you would have to execute the contract?
My understanding from speaking with Jen is that the, the, you don't have a contract. You approved, you, they were awarded under the bid, they haven't executed the contract, so they performed their services, but right now, there is no binding term, and I think they're seeking to have that, so if.
And I understand that, but I, I mean, I would assume if this board awards a bid, that it would follow that we'd have to execute the contract subject to the attorney's review. Um, we shouldn't have to come back for two different votes, and this isn't a criticism of you, Ms. Jenkins, I'm just saying in the, in the interest of, um, of efficiency, if, if we award a bid, it, it would always be that we would sign the contract under the terms of the bid, subject to attorney review, but, um, that, that would be my feeling, and I'm assuming nothing has changed, and I, I do think it's probably, um, belts and suspenders here, but I will make the motion that we sign, um, execute the contract.
And I think it was my fault. I was out for a period of time around that time, and I think that it was probably, um, my error.
Okay. Mr. Bryan has placed a motion on the floor to execute this contract. I hear a second heard motion. Motion by Commissioner Quinn here, for the board discussion on this. Uh, Jenkins, this'll clear up this little matter. We get that contract, we need. All right, anyone in the audience, any concerns over this? No opposition? Motion, uh, Commissioner Bryan's motion passes four and oh.
Thank you, and one, one more quick thing for you all and everybody. Um, we're filming our sixth TV show this weekend, um, and I just want to give everybody a heads up. It's called Bringing Up Bates. It's on UP TV, and it's a family with nineteen children that are coming to visit Gulf County. So you'll see them out and about Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. They will be filming some, um, on the bay, some on the Cape. I'm working with county attorney to have them, um, sign their proper liability forms, but you'll see them out and about, and there, there are a lot of them. This is our sixth television show since, um, January.
What was the name of?
It's called Bringing Up Bates. It's the Bates family. Um, it's similar to the other show that is no longer on air, Nineteen Kids and Counting. They live in, they're from Knoxville, Tennessee. This is their third season, um, and they'll be filming here this weekend.
Bringing Up Bates?
Their last name is Bates.
Oh, Bates.
Bringing Up Bates. There's quite a bit of them. Well, speaking, and speaking of Bates, Anglers and Appetites, which we filmed in June, has been running and doing very well. We got two other, um, we got some added value, and we were on two other networks, so, um, six films and...
Did you see it?
Did you see it? It was very good. So I just want to let you know, if you see a lot of kids around in the next, that's what, that's who they are.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, let's move right along. Miss Lenea, anything for us this morning? Thank you.
No, sir.
Ma'am?
We'll see you then.
Poppins?
Yes, sir.
Well, that takes care of the staff. No, one other, come on, I apologize, I've got so many notes here. I got you right here, I got you right here. Come on up, Michelle. Good morning, good morning to you.
Good morning, commissioners. I've got a, a grant extension request for Langston Drive, the sidewalk design project. Excuse me. It's presently set to be completed by September thirtieth. DOT is reviewing the ninety percent submittal, and they should have it back to Preble Rush by the end of the week. So in order to allow enough time for final revisions, I'm just requesting a thirty-day extension, moving it to October thirtieth.
It's involved, you say five? I mean, how many?
It's, it's for the Langston Drive sidewalk design project.
Okay.
A thirty-day extension is what I'm requesting.
All right. We do.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion. Second, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner McLemore for a thirty-day extension, is that correct? For the board discussion, anyone in the audience, any concerns over this? Not, no opposition, motion passed four and oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Ladies and gentlemen, and includes the staff business, at this time, we will go directly into board business. We'll start over here. Commissioner Quinn, now have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of things. I had an issue, I don't know if, I'm pretty sure the whole county got this issue, um, with Waste Pro, uh, with the leakage of, uh, stuff just leaking on the, on the, on the roads and smelling up the entire neighborhood. I had a chance to address it with, uh, with Mr. Attorney, and, uh, he's on top of it, so, uh, uh, if you got any issues with smelly stuff on the ground after the trucks leave, um, Mr. Attorney's on top of it, so hopefully we can get that corrected as soon as possible. Also, um, I just want to let the public know about the, uh, PDRB board meeting tonight about the affordable housing, um, that's coming up to, uh, this evening at six o'clock. So if, if you're not doing anything, uh, might want to try to show up for that meeting so, so you can know what's going on with the affordable housing. Hopefully, we'll be out the, uh, budget meeting in time to make it, but, uh, we will see.
And now that will be down at City Hall in St. Joe?
That will be, uh, that PDRB board meeting will be at the, um, Centennial Building.
Okay.
Centennial Building at six o'clock.
Right, sir.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Good, Mr. Chairman, thank you. All right, we'll go over to Commissioner Bryan, and Commissioner Bryan, I think, pull pages seven and four, I'll be fine. Forty-five, what was it?
Forty-seven to forty-nine.
Forty-seven and forty-nine. Okay? Elman Wood, let's, uh, look at forty-seven, forty-nine.
And, and this is a, a request for an abandonment of an alleyway in Beacon Hill, and, um, I'm, I'm not quite certain why this was in the consent agenda. I think that it was mistakenly placed in. I, I did speak with our county attorney yesterday about it, and he agreed that it wasn't the appropriate item to be placed in consent. We do have a, an abandonment request process that, um, Mr. Varner would need to go through, and we need to just help him, direct him through that process. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to, we, apparently, we own, the county owns the lot behind this gentleman's lot, and there is an alleyway through the block, but there is, there is a detailed process to go through to request the abandonment, so the, the first issue is that he needs to go through that proper process. The second issue is that we have a, a lot that backs up to him that may be overgrown, and, and I'm happy to send my, um, one of, one of the work crews from District Three out there to check that out and make sure that we're not overgrown. Um, so the reason I pulled it is that it was improper to be approved through consent, and we need to direct him in the, in the proper, um, Mr. Novak, do you want to weigh in on that?
I believe it was the end of two thousand thirteen, early twenty fourteen, this commission had an abandoned petition. You approved it. Following that process, we introduced, uh, the planning department, the administration, and myself, a very detailed and thorough abandonment process for Gulf County. That policy's in place. It hasn't been used, because we haven't had a petition. However, now we had one come in before this one that I've been working with the planning department on a, um, application. So we have potentially two now coming before you in the next month or so, but it's a very, uh, thorough process for noticing, posting on the property, advertising in the paper. The applicants pay the costs, um, but we'll reach out, be happy to work with, uh, Mr. Varner, as well as the other applicants that the county's working with through the planning department right now.
And, and I know we're not speaking to the merits of this request, but, and with these, um, with these alleyways in Beacon Hill, we need to be careful about potential sewer coming in, that we have the area to put in the sewer, the, the lots are very tight, and also for, um, emergency response. So, uh, we will, we will reach out to Mr. Varner and direct him in the proper, um, process. But it, it also leads me to the question that, um, as, as we all know, that our agenda today was over three hundred pages. It's huge. This, this is our agenda, and we just got it a few days ago, so it's quite a task, I believe, for, for all of us to go through, staff and, um, and the board. And my question, Mr. Chairman, is, when, when we as commissioners review the consent agenda, are, are we not to rely on the fact that by being in the consent agenda, that it has been approved by our county administrator, and that, that the county attorney has reviewed what is proper for him to review? I don't expect the county attorney to review the whole agenda, but that whatever needs legal review has been passed to him. And I'm, I'm concerned that items may pass through on the consent that we assume have, have been reviewed by the county administrator and approved, so I, I just want to make sure that our procedures are in place, and, and, you know, if you have any feedback on that, if it's in the consent, I'm assuming that it's been, it's been approved by our administration, and that then it's just subject to our approval.
All right, let's back up just a moment, and we'll address it. We've got two parts here. What do you want to do about the, uh, the, let's go back to page, what, forty-seven? You want that to be excluded out?
Yes.
You're there, a hundred percent, so we need to.
If I could just comment, and I'm gonna read.
Sure, and I'll read some of this, too, but you go ahead, I am.
I want to read, um, it's from Ben Guthrie, um, our department head, and it reads as follows. The attached letters are requests for the county commission to initiate the alleyway abandonment process for the portion of the alleyway located in the second block. Um, the owner requesting the abandonment is Mr. John Varner of Beacon Hill with the address of ninety-two oh-six Augur Avenue. The owner of the second parcel is Gulf County. So what Mr. Varner's done is completely normal process for a resident of Gulf County to request it, and what Mr. Guthrie's done is obviously pass it along to this commission and the staff. There's nothing inappropriate about him providing the letter to the county to initiate the process. Under our policy, we have to start the process when they come before you all. They go through this filter process, like I said, we'll reach out to Mr. Varner, we're gonna guide and shepherd him through with Mr. Lowry's help of the policy, but this request and the memorandum on top of it initiates the process. The other applicant came to the planning department and said, I want to start it, so we've get, we've told them we'll get them the application.
But, but it's, if it's in consent, it's just something, in, in my opinion, the consent agenda should be something that's, it's ready, it's, it's been vetted, and it's ready to be approved. This is something that's beginning a process, and, and it wouldn't really do any good for Mr. Varner for us to approve this through consent. So we need, we need to find a process, and I'm just talking about procedures, and we need to have the proper procedure that, when a request like this comes in, it shouldn't really be in consent. If, if you want to put it in the, the regular agenda that we address it, I still think it's kind of premature to be addressed, because he needs to go through the application process. But this is not that big of an issue, because even if this was approved at consent, it still just begins the process. But what this, what this draws to my attention is, how, how early is the consent agenda reviewed before it comes to us? And I, I just want to know that, in, in my opinion, it was that the consent agenda was a, consent agenda was approved by administration prior to, to it coming to board review. I, I'm just trying to clarify that.
Okay.
Comment.
Let me. Okay, all right, we'll go here to the.
Just one quick one.
Come on.
That's why I review this consent agenda, just like you. If I have a problem with something in there, I pull it out. It's not final until this board votes on it.
But do you assume that if it's in the consent agenda, that it's been approved by staff?
No, no. I review it, every page.
We, and I, and we do need to review every page, but things should be vetted. I believe things should be vetted by staff.
Okay. Just, Mr. Butler, can you shed some light on the attorney, either one here, then I'm gonna address an issue here.
Mr. Chairman, been, over the years, there've been a lot of these requests for abandonment of alleys and roadways. County commission has approved some, disapproved some. The, the process that we work under in this process, I wasn't reviewer, but this was reviewed for consent agenda. A lot of items that submitted to us, we don't put in the consent agenda. The chairman, you and I had a conversation yesterday about a couple of items that were filed for, we didn't put in. There's nothing this board can do to supersede state law. Uh, if you, if you think you were voting to, to abandon that alleyway today, you couldn't do it. There's this process, the state of Florida has set a process up, how do you go through the process? All this does, if Don were to go to you and send you a letter and say, I would love for you to abandon Highway ninety-eight, you're gonna say no. And, and this always does is give us, today, always did give us the okay to start the process, and we'll start bidding. Public works to look at the alley, we may have sewer lines, water lines, cable lines, no telling what might be in the alley, and it gives us the, uh, the ability to start the process. Then we'll come back to you and say, we recommend you, you go forward and have your public hearings. There will be an ad in the paper prior to the abandonment, there'll be an ad in the paper after the abandonment, but in no shape, form, or fashion, this today was going to say the alleyway's been abandoned. This starts the process. You got to start it somewhere.
And all the property owners that gone up to this alley. Everybody has to be in agreement, and the county.
And the board, the county commission has some medicinal direction for the staff, that's fine if you don't want it in the consent agenda, you want it on, in, in the agenda to be discussed openly, that'd be great, too, but as we've done for the last many years, people come to us and they want all kinds of things abandoned, sometime for good reasons, sometime for bad reasons, and at some point in time, you can short-circuit a lot of time and say, no, we're not interested in abandoning industrial road. We need industrial road, so, so don't, staff, don't waste any time on it. But it takes time to go out and determine if this alley is a value to the county or not a value to the county. There's no shape, form, or fashion was going to abandon this alleyway.
Well, of course not, but anyone has the right to request an abandonment. We, we can't approve the right for them to start the process. Any, any person can start the process to request the abandonment, so it's really premature for it to be before this board in the consent agenda. It could be in the information packet to notify us that he is beginning the process, and staff can guide him through that process, but anyone, I, I mean, anyone could file a, a request to abandon ninety-eight. They're not gonna get it, but they have a right to file that request. So we, we really, we really don't need to be approving their request, and, and I'm, I'm just bringing this up so that we can, that we have a huge agenda here, and I'm, I'm just trying to clarify and, you know, clean up our processes, that if, if it's a matter just trying to clarify and, you know, clean up our processes that if it's a matter of notification, it could have been in the information packet. And, you know, it's just something I'm trying to bring to the board's attention so that we do things properly. We don't have, we don't have the right to approve the beginning of the request. He has the right to request whether we approve it or not, frankly. Anyway, I just, I just wanted to bring up that issue.
Nelson. Come on up. I'm going to go ahead and address the attorney.
Commissioners, just, just for your information, I know it's been two years, but we went through this process. It was a very formal process. But under the county's old policy, the applicant, the last time that came before this county commission, paid $150. Okay? That $150 then was translated into an abandonment petition that I don't know off the top of my head, but if Mr. Richardson was here who went through the process with me, it cost the taxpayers in the county over $1,000 in the total evaluation advertisements. I don't know about resources for the county. After we were done with that, I met with Mr. Butler. We discussed the process and the exorbitant cost that it takes for the county to go through this process. We went back and wrote a very thorough, comprehensive policy that's now in place. We have not had a petition since we put that policy in place. The purpose of the policy that we introduced to this commission that was unanimously passed was so that if someone did petition to have property abandoned that's a county right-of-way alleyway, roadway, that they would shoulder that burden and that cost, and the taxpayers wouldn't. And so we passed that policy. It has not been used, and when we had the petition that came before us, before this one, Mr. Lowry and I have been working on the application that we were hoping to get out to the other property owner up in Overstreet. So this, in terms of how the process is initiated, it's a good time for you to provide us, the staff, the instruction. If you wanted in the information, but the applicant also is going to be paying $1,000, $2,000, $3,000 going forward, they need to understand that cost. And I think the initial impetus to this discussion should be the commission saying whether they're going to entertain it. If they're going to start advertising, paying these advertising costs, and the board has no intent on granting that abandonment of a specific right-of-way, it's a good point to have the discussion in a public forum where you tell the applicant, maybe it's not in their best interest to spend that type of money. So however the conversation starts, we'll take today's comments. I'll work with Mr. Lowry, and we can include that in the application on how it's submitted for the first time.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would say, then in due process, then that has to be part of our procedure. If this board has to allow it to go forward, that has to be part of the procedure, and we need to review every request before it goes forward. There needs to be a process that every person goes through that's the same for every person. But, you know, I would caution that process because we have no real information, and for us to make a decision based on just that first blush, of course, we've used the ridiculous example of 98 because we know that's something that we would not do. But I guess we need to look at the process and determine. And when I spoke with you yesterday, Mr. Attorney, you seemed to agree with me that it was not an appropriate entry for the consent agenda. And I'm not, you know, I'm not being critical of anything. I'm, I'm just saying, there was two issues here. One was, we need to get this request into the proper process, and we need to guide our resident who's making this request. The other is, how is our consent agenda being reviewed? Because it's something that we pass without discussion. So there are two separate issues, and the issue of the consent agenda doesn't really have anything to do with this alleyway abandonment request, other than the fact that it just kind of brought that issue to the forefront.
And I think, I think what we've done in the past and why we were trying to get to where we're at today is that we were going through the whole process, and people spending money, and we didn't need to do that. So the first thing that we tried to do is to put it before the board and say, "Do you want to proceed with this?" And that was the whole idea in setting up the policies and procedures that we followed. There were actually times, as Mr. Butler said, that people come up and requested abandonment of certain lands that the board knew that they just didn't want to abandon. So why go through the whole process? And so that with this request was to take and put it before you so that, you know, it's in the consent agenda. It's just to say, "Yes, we don't see any issues," or "Yes, there are issues," and just to move forward with it.
And then again, I would say that the board would look to the recommendations of the county administrator and staff. So if the county administrator has issues with addressing this abandonment, then we need to hear those things. So, and again, I'm not saying it shouldn't be in the consent. If this board wants these type of items in the consent, but to me, this is something that would probably require some discussion. It's not, it's not a done deal and ready to go. And I'm just putting those questions out there regarding the consent agenda. And again, we're talking about two different issues here, the abandonment issue and the consent agenda. And was just asking for clarification from the chairman and the board of what type of items they want in the consent agenda. I am concerned about this abandonment request due to the possibility of the sewer lines going in. That doesn't mean I'm against it, but I do think there are some issues. Does he need to go through the process, or do we need to cut him off here? I don't know. I guess I would need to hear from staff on that. So if staff does have recommendations regarding this alleyway...
Well, those are things that we would address later on in the process. If there's nothing right up front that would stop you, those are things, because we have to go out to all the utilities. We go out to all surrounding property owners. We go to our staff, Public Works, to see if there are going to be any issues with abandoning this property. So that actually is addressed later on and not up front. It's the way I think the policy and procedure is set up.
Yeah, and I'm just reviewing it right now. It's from a year and a half ago. It's about a seven-page policy. It's, and I'm looking right now. It looks to be about a 60-plus day process from when they noticed the county. Anyone wishing to petition the Board of County Commissioners to vacate, close, or abandon shall first complete and sign an application and a petition to vacate. So that's what Mr. Lowry's been working on, inconsistent with his policies once we got that request. So we'll work with Mr. Varner as well as the other petition that's come before the county.
And we're really making a bigger issue out of it than I had intended. I just wanted some clarification regarding the consent agenda, particularly when we're dealing with this large of an agenda at a meeting.
Let's, let's address forty-seven. What you pulled, page forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine, what's your wishes for these three? We're into two things, like you said.
My concern on this abandonment is...
You want to pull it? What are you going to do?
When I had, of course, I brought this to the attorney yesterday to ask for some guidance regarding, is this the proper process for abandonment request? I believe that Mr. Varner should have the right to go through the process, but I don't know that this alleyway abandonment is appropriate. I am concerned, we want to put sewer out to Beacon Hill. The lots are very small out there, so it's something that would require more investigation and some recommendations from the staff. But I wouldn't say that he doesn't have the right to pursue that abandonment request.
If I can make a recommendation to the commissioners that the three pages that you're referring to, that the Planning Department, Mr. Nelson, myself, will reach out to Mr. Varner as we have with the other applicant. And if the motion to include it or to approve it, we're just allocating the county's resources to engage the gentleman with the Planning Department to begin working on it, vetting the process, explaining to him, giving him the application, explaining the fees that he can anticipate. He's required to actually physically post notices on the property 15 days prior to the hearing. He's required to provide certified mailers to them. He's required to run it advertisements in the paper. So these are the things that are going to go through with this gentleman and anybody else that petitions in the county in the future. So with an approval from the commission, with those conditions, we'll engage the gentleman and work with him so he understands the process. If he fills out the application and pays the new application fee and is willing to incur those costs, then we'll come back to you at a later date, or he will as an applicant.
And that's fine. And I will also, like I said, I'll have a work crew from District Three go out and check on that lot that the county owns, that we are being good stewards, as other landowners are, with maintaining the land there.
But we're obligated to, we're actually obligated to go out and help this person because they filed the paperwork, correct?
Your Planning Department, your other county departments are going to work with these folks, but the costs now are shouldered exclusively by the applicant.
I understand that.
So that is the, yeah, so it's just county staff helping.
Do you need a vote on this to move forward with it?
We acknowledge it if you want to, however you want to take those three pages. We now know it. There's not a recommendation. There's no action of the board. We're just going to move forward. But if we have a vote, obviously, of the board, that they're acknowledging the application, we'll move, or the petition, we'll move forward and get the gentleman an application.
And we don't have an application, so we really don't have anything to approve. But, you know, I would say in this process of requesting an abandonment, that if someone wants to request an abandonment, the fees associated should come close to covering the cost that the county bears in looking into whether it's an appropriate abandonment or not. So when people ask to have an alleyway abandoned, they gain several feet, seven and a half feet or more of property to their property. And if they want to go through the process of having the county abandon such an alleyway, there should be a fee that covers the expenses to the county. And...
They are.
But, well, what I'm hearing is that the fee is not, doesn't really cover that. The application fee is not...
The Planning Department and I have been working on the application, I think, for about three weeks. So part of that application defines all that. The policy's very clear. The application needs to be provided to Mr. Varner, and then he can fill it out, pay the fee, then move forward.
Okay. So I think you're making a bigger issue than, you know, what I have asked to clarify, but we'll move on.
All right. You want to, the question here is simple. We want to...
The attorney said we don't have to take any action for him to move forward.
Well, that, of that then. So, but my question is, we're going to put the forty-seven, forty-nine back in the consent agenda? Is what we're going to do?
It's not necessary. And we've already passed the agenda without it.
The deal. I'm just trying to get clarification here. All right.
Okay. So on a lighter note, I have another issue.
But I want a question right quick that you brought up. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the agenda that the commissioner's talking about right here of this. This is what we're dealing. This is, September's the end of the physical year in here, and I see the people are back there, so I know they won't object. There's probably 70 pages in here of simply, let me go out over here to the right place. Here it is, from the, and I'll use these people, from the Department of Health, its court contract, just giving you information in here, what their fee schedules are. It's just things that are required. We have a hundred and something, sixty-something page, and then the EDC they have in here is just reports. So what made this thing so large? I don't understand, and Mr. Nelson, I'm not being critical, but maybe we could have just had one page says it's on record with the clerk's office. Anybody that wants to look at any of this stuff. So I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just saying.
Oh, but you have. Oh, but you have, Mr. Chairman.
I know it. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to explain that a lot of this is just strict, it has to be.
A lot of it is reports in the past when it's a fee schedule or a contract that you're agreeing to. It is put in there. We can do just what you suggested. We've done it in a lot of situations.
But you're doing what you're supposed to do.
But this one has typically been that way so that it's, all the fees are out there for everybody to see, for you to see, what the Health Department is planning to charge. We can condense it, we can reduce it, and put that one page, and they can come see me, and I'll be glad to show it to them.
Oh, you continue to do what you're doing. I was just trying to put a little humor here.
That's all right. I laughed.
All right. Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, let's go back over here.
And we do have 230 pages aside of that agreement, so we did have a lot of items in the, in the agenda.
We do, we do, and it does get bigger. But I will remind you that it is your agenda, and whatever procedure or process is that you want in place, we'll be glad to do. So as long, you know, if you, you know, we are doing a process now, we're reviewing it before it's released with the administration. You know, they give us what they want, we put it in, and then there's another review process before we actually release it to you or the public. But it's your agenda, and we'll be glad to accommodate you in whichever way we can.
We thank you for preparing it for us. All right, you fell out for it.
Okay, positive. Go on a positive now.
Do what now?
A positive.
Okay, let's go.
Okay. White City Park. We've had some great improvements out at White City Park, and this board has pulled together to fund fixing White City Park. Commissioner McLemore has been instrumental in assisting that work to be done. We've had all the folks from Maintenance, Public Works, Parks and Recreation have all pulled together. It's been a true, full county effort, and it's very exciting to be out there and see the work going on, and I'm very thankful to this board and to the, all the staff and all the, everyone who works at the county who's been involved. We have a lot more to go because there are, there are some very serious long-term problems at White City, but I believe that we've pulled together the short-term issues. One of the main issues at the, at the park, at the boat ramp, is that the concrete is giving way. There is a, one piece in particular that is of great concern, but we are also concerned about the remainder. And I want the board, I know at the last meeting, we did approve going out for bid, and it is in the minutes of our agenda today because the clerk's office is on it. They're right up to date with their minutes. They're doing a great job. But I don't think we've gone out to bid, so I want to make sure that anything that we need today from the board, that staff needs in order to be able to go out for bid to get that work done, I think it's a, it's a critical issue. I think that it's potentially a dangerous situation if we don't address it. And I think we need a short-term solution on the one piece that's coming apart, and then we need a long-term solution for the entire thing because it's old and we're going to have those problems. So if maybe our county administrator can guide us with whatever they need to be able to go out for bid, or have we gone out for bid?
Certainly the most dangerous far has been addressed. It looks good. It looks very good. We got a problem with a wall. Last board meeting, I think, Commissioner Bryan said, didn't want a Band-Aid on it. And Mr. McLemore goes out, and my conversation with Commissioner Bryan Wednesday after the last board meeting, or Thursday after the last board meeting was, Mr. McLemore got some good practical ideas on how to do some things out there, could save some money. If you go in, if the direction from the board is for us to go out and engineer it and totally replace that wall, talking about a lot of money. If the direction from the board is to do necessary engineering, or whether it be in-house or engineers go out and do it, it'll probably be less money. And we could use some direction if you want to put a Band-Aid on it. We can probably, I think, Mr. McLemore got some ideas how we can buy many years without spending a whole lot of money. But some direction from the board would be great.
I would, and I would definitely like to hear from the board and from Commissioner McLemore, who's been heavily involved in the process. But I would like for us to go out at least for bid on that one, about 100, 110 feet of concrete that, of the wall that is coming out. And to bid on that quickly, get that out so that we can get that shored up. But then I want us to look at a more long-term solution, which clearly is going to be expensive. And if we can go out there and see if we can pull in some more funds with the funds that we do have. But I'd love to hear your input on that.
Okay, let's go.
I think we, definitely we're going in the right direction with it. We've made major improvements out there. We had 79 boats in there, I think, Saturday morning for a tournament. I mean, it's going on there. The section that you are talking about, I don't think it's quite 110 feet, but regardless of what it is, that's what I would suggest, going in there and trying to, to repair at this point in time. Get it out, get a contractor to come in there and do it. We know how to do it, but Works knows, knows what we need. I know what we need to fix it with. We just need somebody to do the work. Those sheet pilings, those concrete pilings are about 40 feet in, into the ground, 30 feet, somewhere on there. Lee did the research on that. I hate to go in there and tear out something that's workable and something that's good at this point in time. I think we could go in there and repair this section, probably get by with years, really, before we have to go in there and do anything else with the wall. I would suggest you looking real hard at that building, maybe taking the skin off of it and opening it up into a picnic area or something, but, you know, that's just me. But I would support you on going out for bids on this, on this, see if we can get a contractor to come in here and fix that one section as quick as possible. We need it.
And I agree with that. And I do think that once they get in there and look at that section, that we may have a better idea of what's going on at the rest of the site.
And it may, it may be that... And it may, it may be that once we get that repaired, just like you just said, we can go in there, look at the whole picture then, go in there and maybe dig her out three or four feet, that whole section, I'm talking about from the, from the wall to the, to the building, getting that whole section out, labbing it, pouring your, your footers with your concrete and stuff to help stabilize the wall that's there now. But I don't think we need an engineer to fix that part that we're talking about. We fixed, we fixed and repaired these walls for years. But Works has repaired them for years. We know what, what it's going to take to fix it, is my point. I don't, I will support you right now.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion, and I know we did approve to go out for bid, but it was somewhat vague, and so I'll make the motion that we go out for bid on that section of sex wall. And we do that as quickly as permitted by law to go out for bid by that, for that section.
I'll second that. If, if we could, probably going to come under the, probably going to go over the bid limit, but who knows? You know, if, if we can get it under the bid limit, then we can move faster with that project.
And, and you know, there, I was speaking with Mr. Trailer yesterday, and he has spoken with Mr. Highsmith, which I know Commissioner McLemore, that you mentioned, you spoke with him as well, and that he did express concern regarding putting the machinery out there that it may give way. So, it is somewhat of a difficult operation. There's a limited amount of space between the building and the wall, and the cables that are holding the wall in are giving, giving out. So, I think that we need to be very cautious, and we need to make sure that we have someone out there that's properly insured and bonded because it, it is, it's, it's a job that has the potential for problems down the road as they start working.
Would you want to engineer it then? I have no problem either way. I just want it, I'd like to see it fixed.
I guess, what, what...
Hold up just a minute. We're getting, hold up here. You got the floor?
We need the microphone.
I didn't hear you. We can't bid it without engineering it, Michael.
I don't know how you would identify the specs to bid something if we don't get some plans of some sort. The county doesn't have that expertise to do it. So, I mean, there's no other way to do it.
I agree with Mr. Hammond. I think we need really proper specs written, and we still may not even know till they start digging in, but I do think it's a serious issue, and I would like for it to be done properly to protect the county.
All right. We have this motion to address this portion that's leaning. We have a second by Commissioner McLemore for our staff to proceed. Other board discussion on... I'll agree, we can, we need to address this. Rest of that wall, I've been out there, and all the commissioners have been there, and I think after we straighten up this one problem, we probably got some good years ahead of us before we have to address a major problem out there. Anyway, the motion's on the floor. We have a second. Any other? I'm good. Do anyone in the audience hold this? All right. Any opposition? If not, this motion, Commissioner Bryan passes 4-0. Hey. Still have the floor?
I'm, I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we've, let me get through, we'll be through with the board business. I have a few items that I have to discuss today. Anyone from St. Joe Beach, Beacon Hill? Anyone here? Anyone? Yeah, we got something there. Okay, great. As you know, in the past, I went back to day one. The Florida Department of Transportation has proposed a sidewalk along US 98, starting at Pine Street and going to Highway 386 on the landward side. Then, they came back and modified it to put a part of it over on the, we'll call it on the gulf side or the, on the water side. I went back and looked into this. This, and it's on record. Anyone would like to look at this. This is a transportation enhancement project grant application. This grant was written by Ms. Kapinski, who's sitting right over there, who was our grant writer at the time. And I just want to hit a point or two in here with you, and I've had some questions, and I made several requests that DOT come right here to answer questions. And I may ask this board that we just shut this down until somebody comes up here and stands. We've reached out to them. We've got no response. They're 90% through and they're going. But in this, let me read you. It says right up here, "St. Joe Beach Multiple Use Path Project." Multiple use. Can you turn right on over here into the grant? And let me read this to you right quick. This project will provide a multi-use path along US 98 from Pine Street at St. Joe Beach to Beacon Hill Park, to the park. All right? Right on down here, it says, "The project will begin at Pine Street and end north of Beacon Hill Park. It is approximately 10 linear feet wide and 10,500 feet long. This is a multi..." The project will consist of a 10-foot-wide paved multi-use path on the landward side of US 98 through the St. Joe Beach area." And that's what the original grant was written for. My big question, and I can't seem to get them to come right here, who changed this? Who made the decision? That's all I want to know for the people out there. It's grave concern, we, Ms. Kapinski filed a multi-use grant to stop at the park. Now, DOT come in, yes, they held a little meeting at the fire station, but they didn't do it because it's out of goodness of their heart, and they were required to do it. They were required. Now, do you people, maybe your commissioner here, any of you want to get together and have a town hall meeting out there to discuss this? This is, it's not going to affect me. I live up in Weberhitzka. Not going to affect Mr. McLemore, me and our, Commissioner Bryan over here, but it's going to affect some of you people. DOT says, "We know what's best for you." Sometimes they might, sometime they might not. So, just want to bring this back up. I don't know why these people won't come. We may shut them down. Bring that to your attention. If anyone in the audience would like to say anything on this, on mine. I do have concerns about this. Applied for a multi-path, now they were getting a five-foot sidewalk. It's supposed to be on the hillside, on the landward side, now they're going to put some of it over on the water side. Totally changed from the, from the ground. All right. Next, ladies and gentlemen, got a call yesterday from, this is Cerber. She's out, and we, at the last meeting, addressed about doing some limited maintenance out there on a road. It's, it's used by law enforcement, ambulance, you name it. And she said the people that come out had done a good job, but apparently, and she asked me, said, "But they didn't quite finish." I said, "Well, ma'am, I don't know I can get with the proper people. They might have ran out of material, might have got moved." But anyway, I've already mentioned this with Ms. Botha, and we're going to go back and address that for her, but we did go out. I want to thank the board, too. I want to thank all these workers for backing up what Commissioner Bryan says about White City. It's amazing, this quality of workers that we have. We went out and done in six days, but probably took contracts six weeks to do. And only, I don't, have you run the numbers yet? Have you run the numbers on the expense?
Yes, we do. Commissioner Bryan has.
Good. I could report on it for the people.
Well, we had so far, and the, the numbers aren't all here, but so far, we had spent 2366 on the park and 2506 and change on the docks. But we also had the wood that our, our folks had gone out and pursued because we had wood that had been used that did not perform the way that it should have. And it was our, our guys that had gone out and pursued that wood. So, it would have cost much more if we didn't have that wood.
Yeah. That, I, my hat goes off to Lee and Mark. They went out and actually persuade, persuaded Yellowwood to replace or donate back probably $75,000 worth of, worth of wood.
$80,000.
$80,000, which they should have because back four or five years before that, they sold us some wood that wasn't up to grade. It's what it amounted to. But Lee and Mark took that project on their own. Now, we're seeing, we're really seeing the benefit from it, like Commissioner Bryan said. With what we've done down there so far at the park, no telling what it, what it would have costed us, really.
Right. Our, our folks have done just a wonderful job, and we really do have talented people that can, can do, do the, really the best work.
I've always said they could build a super Walmart if they wanted to. You know?
If we could fund it.
Yeah.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, let me move along in the sake of time. I have some grave concerns, and I want to address the people. Only time I get to address the people is at this microphone with you in the audience and the people watching on television. And I've already, and it's going to involve one commissioner, our local editor, nothing derogatory, but yes, we've got to correct a wrong. In the SOR paper, the September the 17th edition, and down here, and use all of it, tax increases, county taxpayers, that's the school board in the board. Over in the side, we want to read something. It's on six, I think I'm correct, 6-8. Let me get it turned around. It'll take just a moment here. And we were discussing parks at our, in budget, and it goes on here to say, the commission, and Bryan said, we're talking Commissioner Bryan rather, "Commissioners were prepared to provide $10,150 to T.L. James Park within Weberhitzka city limits." All right? With a tight parks budget, but which provides just $5,000 per district. Now, the $5,000 comes from TDC, not out of your pocket there, funding. Bryan wondered why were commissioners putting twice that much into one park? Well, we're not. That's been transferred to TDC. $10,000 for the city of Port St. Joe for their recreation, $10,000. Now, here's the kicker. Bryan noted also putting $15,000 a year into Dead Lake's Park, which does not produce a profit from camping and RV site rentals. Now, that is totally wrong, and Mr. Croft, I think maybe he got misled. I think the commissioner might have gotten misled. But ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to tell you, of all the parks in Guff County, Dead Lake's campground and Park is the only campground in parks that don't cost you one penny, not a penny. The $15,000, I think, was confusing is the fact that was carryover money, carryover money. Now, as of September the 4th, and we have it all here through the clerk's office, that park has collected $39,449. Out of that comes sales tax. Out of that comes TDC tax. The only thing there that pays any TDC tax, the only park in this county that pays its light bill. Salinas don't pay the light bill. This park is self-supporting. I have a letter here from, is this Herring over here? But 39,000, and I keep, I keep up. We took this park, I want to tell you this. When I came on board, and I don't want to be, anybody think I'm talking foul, but it took with the former sheriff, Nugent, and two deputies. We had to go up and run the prostitutes, the drug dealers, the transits, and we took, we was $10,000 in the hole, and this year, we're going to collect, we haven't got the rest of the money, we're probably going to top out 42,000 gross on this park. We got it out. I brought in one park director, didn't work out. Can that one? We've got one now. A young man from Port St. Joe is up there running this park, and it's paying its way. We had to put a well down last year. The taxpayers didn't pay for that well. The people that use this park paid for that well. We built a new, a covered area up there. The taxpayers didn't pay for it. The park pays. That was the whole thing. The board said, "You take it and you turn it around," and we turned this thing around. But no disrespect, Mr. Croft and I, we've always had a great relationship. We're going to tend to have a great relationship. I think there was no investigative reporting done into this, but we need to correct this. This is the only time I get to. I don't, you know, I don't have a newspaper. This is the only time I have an opportunity to do it. But no, $15,000 of your tax money hadn't gone to that park. It was carryover money, and the park is self-supporting, and hopefully, one day, we can get this park out here in Salinas Park where it can start paying its way. But I just want that clarified, and I think you might have got some bad numbers. No disrespect to you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I, I'll just clarify. I think that was discussion during a budget meeting, and when we were just talking about the numbers and in the budget that we were speaking of, I had brought up a, and I don't have it in front of me, but of a $40,000 expenditure roughly, I'm rounding.
Yeah, well, here it is right here.
And let me just finish, a $25,000 revenue stream, and when I mentioned that to you, you, you did not clarify or change that. So, I, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Croft, but my guess is he was just reporting on what we were discussing at the budget meeting. Now, whether we were discussing a fully fleshed-out discussion on Dead Lake's Park, we weren't. We were discussing the budget, and you did have an opportunity to respond at that time.
Well, hindsight's 20-20. I'll agree with you with that, but it's time being. One other thing, it goes on in here, I have the floor here, though. It says, and also, this is $30,000 going to one district and $5,000 to the others. That's not true. Bryan said, noting both parks, that's T.L. James and Dead Lake's, sit within commission chair, Ward McDaniel's District 1. When did we swap districts? Anyway, I just want this cleared up to the people because you need, you know, that's the whole thing. Dead Lake's Park paying its way, people, it's making a profit, and we got to go up there and add six more additional parking spaces to it, but it won't be at your expense, it will be at the expense of these people that use it. Thank you.
And those are all things that were discussed at the meeting. So, you, you do have, you were here. You had the opportunity to speak up and clarify, and that's why we talk about things. I would love for you to respond.
Well, I've got to cover the tracks. I understand that. And I have a letter right here, or a statement from Mrs. Herring over there. Let me read this, and that's it. Dead Lake's Park revenues fund 100% of the expenditure items charged. 100%. Don't cost you a penny, people. What's costing you? I'll turn it around. Thank you. That's all I have this morning. Do you want to, let's take a quick recess, or you want to keep moving? I know what you want to do.
Thirty more minutes, I'm gone.
All right. About thirty minutes. Thirty minutes, I'm gone. Hope you hang around a while. All right? This time, we're going to address ourselves over to the attorney. Mr. Croft, of all due respect to you, sir, I thank you for just some misconception there, and you do a marvelous job, and I commend you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know the commissioner expressed, but I do, there's two people that I do want to speak with that have been waiting around, and I do need to sit with staff on two planning issues. So, can I ask respectfully just for a three-minute recess?
You can.
If I can address those two things with staff?
Recess, three minutes.
Thank you.
Just called back. We still, we still have quite a bit of business before the board this morning, so if everyone would kindly take their seats and, we've got one waiting on the administrator. He'll be here in just a moment. Mr. Attorney, I think we can proceed without him. We have some quasi-judicial hearings before the board this morning. Let me go ahead and recognize you, and let's move along in the sake of time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your agenda packet, number five, you have four land development applications before you today, consistent with your county's process that you followed. You did not adopt the policy, but we recommended a hearing procedure and a process about a year ago in January. The first one, what we'll do is we'll go through the same process we have on your quasi-judicials prior to this. After we ask each of the applicants to come forward, we'll ask both the board, the applicant, and the public if anyone contests waiving of a quasi-judicial procedure. If there is, and there's not a mutual consent of all parties, then we'll go through the process. If there is no objection, then we'll move right into a public hearing with the record reflecting that the quasi-judicial has been waived by all parties. So, after we get past that and we swear them in through the clerk's office, we will then begin the process of the first application and the variance. I'll turn it over to the planner. So, the first one today is a variance for Robert Sutton, parcel ID 01. So the first one today is a variance for Robert Sutton, parcel ID 01555-001R in North Highway 71. It is a variance application, and I asked Mr. Sutton if he could kindly come forward or anybody else on his behalf.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, as he approaches, I just asked the commission, Mr. Sutton, and anybody else here to participate in the quasi-judicial, if there's any objection to the waiving of the quasi-judicial procedures before they hear this variance application.
All right. Is anyone object to the waiving? Anyone? You've heard the attorney. Mr. Attorney?
All right.
I see no one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the record could reflect that there is no objection and the consent of all parties affirming that they are waiving a quasi-judicial for this application for variance. Mr. Sutton, we discussed the procedure, and again, as I indicated, what we'll do is we'll move directly to a public hearing, turn it over to the planner, and have him introduce the application, provide the staff recommendations, and then we'll proceed with any questions and answers before you provide the recommendation of your PDRB.
All right. At this time, we recognize, Mr. Lowry, are you ready to present?
Yes, sir. Your first application is for Mr. Robert Sutton, parcel ID 01555-001R. Mr. Sutton, if you'll turn to his application, the second page, C-1 attachment. He is seeking a variance of seven and a half feet from the, he's got right-of-way, but it would be an easement, which will allow a 12 and a half-foot new addition of a lean-to pole barn on his property. And I'd ask Mr. Sutton if he want to go ahead and explain that.
Sutton, if you would? Yes, I'd like to, first, give your name right over here to this young lady and your address right over here.
Excuse me. Robert Sutton, 2481 Highway 71 North, Weewahatchka.
Okay, proceed.
I'd like to build a 12 by 64 shed roof addition attached to the Weewahatchka trading post. I need this area to work on cypress wood out of the sun and let it dry. I'm seeking a seven and a half-foot variance from the right-of-way, which is 12 and a half feet away from the new addition. I own both adjacent properties. The right-of-way leads to my house and to my RV park.
Do you own it?
I own it. I own all of it.
All right, I'm very familiar with the area.
And I'm not going to do anything to impede ingress or address to my RV park.
You own the park, too?
Yes, I own the park.
All right. If you, I understood you to say you're going to put up a 12 by 64.
Yes.
Remember, go through the building department.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll go over the vote from the planning board.
Okay.
The planning board recommended by 3-0 vote to permit up to an eight-foot setback on the south side of that property. Their one concern was his easement, but he does own all portions of the adjacent land around him. So that was their main concern in recommending that variance for eight-foot, up to eight-foot.
So the PDR board unanimously recommended to this board the approval of this question. Okay.
They actually didn't approve what he was requesting, but they are permitting, they are recommending him, the board, the B.O.C.C., to allow him up to eight-foot.
All right, Mr. Sutton, is that, will that help you?
Yes, sir. I was only seeking seven and a half foot, so it's only a six-inch difference.
Okay. All right, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the forms have been adopted by the county with regards to variance applications. The planner polled the PDRB, and they voted 3-0 that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. They affirmed that position and gave you as substantial competent evidence that Mr. Sutton had established that criteria. And in addition to that, sections 35, 36, 37, and 40, which with the permission of the commission, I'll waive the reading of those form criteria, basically that it was properly noticed, that the planning board reviewed the criteria, the planner explained it to them, and they affirmed all four of those sections of your PDRB, and recommending 3-0 that you approve their recommendation.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Attorney?
No, sir.
All right, let's go to the board here. I've got a motion, Commissioner McLemore to approve recommendation of the PDR board. I hear a second to this motion.
Second motion.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Quinn. Is any other board discussion? Do you want any audience, any discussion on this? There's no opposition to the motion, the motion passed 4-0. All right, sir, next.
Mr. Chairman, the second item you have is a minor subdivision preliminary plat, Mr. Steve Obish, parcel ID 06345-100R, Cape San Blas Road, Cape San Blas, seven-unit subdivision. The PDRB has provided following competent and substantial evidence made a recommendation to you. Similar to the other application, I'd first ask for the applicants to come forward. Anybody in the audience that wishes to testify, the applicant or the commission, if anybody objects to the waiving of a quasi-judicial proceeding, if they would please indicate that, otherwise we can move into a public hearing.
Are there any objection waiving? All right, is Mr. Obish, or any representative of Mr. Obish? Mr. Hussman, are you representing?
Yes, sir.
Obish, all right, please come forward.
Mr. Obish would like to do a proposed seven-lot subdivision. I'm sorry, Lloyd Jack Hussman III, P.O. Box 141, Weewahatchka, Florida, 32465.
All right, go ahead, Jack.
On Gulf County parcel number 06345-100R is a 2.74-acre parcel, and the allowed density for the parcel is 8.22 lots, and we're only requesting for seven lots at the time. The parcel is located on Cape San Blas along State Road 30E, and any other questions I'll be happy to ask for.
I heard you say that it would occupy eight, but he's only requesting seven?
Seven, yes, sir. The maximum is eight, and we're only asking for seven. Yes, sir, that's due to the DOT issues. Yes, sir.
Anyone in the board have any questions on this? What was the, anyone? Yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the planner will now provide you the planning board's recommendations and his comment.
All right, Mr. Lowry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The planning board yesterday voted unanimously to approve this preliminary plat of this subdivision, seven-unit subdivision. The only concern they have was the DOT issues, and if they had contacted DOT on this, which they have, which Mr. Hussman just explained, planning board then again did vote to approve this.
Okay. That all, Mr. Lowry?
Yes, sir.
Any motion from the commission? If there's no other questions from the public or from Mr. Hussman, I just ask you to include in your motion, one, that it's substantial competent evidence that you waive the reading, as I'm stating right now, the other criteria in that form, and that, I don't know if I noted, but there was no objection to waiving the quasi-judicial. So, thank you, sir.
Fair to it. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I have a second. I have a second. Second by Commissioner Quinn. All right, any further board discussion on this easement for Mr. Obish? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, anyone in the audience? Any concerns? Anyone? Cape, anything? Not? Any opposition? Opposition, motion passed 4-0, this variance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Mr. Attorney, I think we're going to Palms at Money Bayou next.
Correct, sir. And this is a development review, Phase 2, consistent with your LDRs and the county's comp plan. The Palms at Money Bayou LLC, parcel ID 03179005R, County Road 38, Money Bayou Development Review for Approval and Development Order for four units, known as Phase 2. Mr. Craig Donnelly is the name of the applicant and his agents of record. They were presented before the planning board yesterday, and they now are here today. The first item, as I've mentioned the first three, two times, is if there's any objection as the applicant comes forward to the waiving of a quasi-judicial hearing, then please come forward so that we can swear you in. Otherwise, if there is a mutual consent of all the parties and the public, we'll go right into a public hearing.
All right, again, anyone with a waiving quasi? Quasi? One's objected.
Okay, and if Mr. Conley would come, Mr. Donnelly would come forward, and he has no objection.
Come on up, sir. I didn't see your name here on this. Good morning. Yes, it's still morning. Good morning. If you would, please give your name and address.
I'm Mr. Donnelly. I'm Terry Anderson with Anderson Engineering, 78 Ricker Avenue.
Okay, you're not Mr. Donnelly.
No, sir.
You're Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to know who I'm talking with.
Right. 78 Ricker Avenue in Santa Rosa Beach, 32459.
Thank you, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you. This is Phase 2 of a long and drawn-out development that I'm sure all of you are aware of at Money Bayou. Five lots had previously been approved. Construction is underway with one residence, which is almost completed at this point. What we're asking for is permission to go into Phase 2, which will be the final phase. This is four lots. All permits and approvals from the various agencies have been obtained, and we're ready to move forward.
All right, sir. Mr. Lowry?
Yes, sir. The planning board yesterday voted 3-0 unanimously to approve Phase 2 of Palms at Money Bayou. They did receive their DEP permitting. It is in with their packet in your application that I passed out earlier. They received that in December of 2014. Again, they voted 3-0 to approve that, Phase 2.
All right. You've heard. That all, Mr. Lowry?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, gentlemen, ladies, you heard the recommendation. We're going to have a motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn. Second. Got a second by Commissioner Bryan. Other board discussion. Want any audience, any discussion for this Palms at Money Bayou? Not? There's no opposition? Motion passed 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, sir.
There you go. Have a safe trip back to Santa Rosa. All right, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, the fourth item you have this morning is a small-scale map amendment. The applicant is Carmen McLemore, our commissioner, parcel ID 01045050R. He has filled out the necessary State Form 8B with regards to abstaining from the participation in this review, and he has provided that to the clerk's office. I believe he has an agent of record that's here on his behalf, Mr. Hussman. As he approaches, again, I would poll the commission, the public, and the applicant if there's any objection to the waiving of a quasi-judicial proceeding. If so, please come forward to be sworn in by the clerk.
Okay, anyone on the board object to waiving? Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience, Mr. Attorney?
Let the record reflect, there's no objection to it, and under your process and procedure, what we'll do is we'll note that for the record, that there's been a mutual consent of all parties to move into a public hearing. Mr. Hussman's here on behalf of this land use change. I have some ordinances and policy that I can provide to the commission along with the planner after Mr. Hussman's presentation.
Gulf County parcel number, I'm sorry, Lloyd Jack Hussman III, P.O. Box 141, Weewahatchka, Florida, 32465. Zero, Gulf County parcel number 01045-05R is a one-acre parcel along the Shippola River and near Weewahatchka, Florida, and it is the intent of the owner to place a small camp there. And currently, all of the land use is in conservation, and it's being requested for the parcel to be placed into residential. Right now, we're working with DEP and trying to get the necessary permits in order to place the small camp there, and it's an ongoing process, and we're trying to finalize that soon.
All right, sir. Lowry, before I go back to the attorney, or Mr. Attorney, you want me to go to you first for some clarification on this?
Yes, sir. I spoke with the planner. What I wanted to do is provide the commission.
All right, I'm going to let you go, and then we'll go to Mr. Lowry.
Just historically, this commission has reviewed three, this will be the third similar, just a bit of history. The Gulf County Rod and Gun Club Estate was divided by order of the court back in 1962, August 21st. These are the parcels of property that is on the actual application. The Gulf County Comp Plan was adopted on June 12, 1990. The Gulf County Land Development Regulations were adopted in January of 1993. Since then, in January of 2012, the commission approved to waive a small-scale map amendment application fee, as you see noted by the planner, for property owners of conservation lands that qualified for this exception. Since you've adopted that policy three and a half years ago, Gulf County threw a small-scale map amendment with the established fee waiver, has since approved land use change from conservation to residential for two parcel IDs under ordinance 2012-02 in March 27 of 2012, and then again under ordinance 2013-08. These small-scale map amendments are to be accomplished through ordinance, and that was, the last one was done on December 10 of 2013. These properties privately owned are designated as conservation. The commission has cited in past policy and in previous meetings, most recently on September 11 of 2012, to approve planning PDRB recommendations that stated in part, in consideration of current development dispute and previous approvals, the PDRB recommends to the Board of County Commissioners to direct any private property owner with a verified single lot of record parcel with a deeded boundary of 10 acres or less before the adoption of the 1990 Comprehensive Plan that was designated conservation to apply for a small-scale land use change per Florida Statute 163 to pursue the reconciliation for any development grievance on that parcel. The application before you today is consistent with those policies. I believe Mr. Lowry has the recommendations of the planning board as well, and I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to this application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Lowry.
Yes, sir. Yesterday, the planning board did vote 3-0 to approve this small-scale land use change from conservation to residential. The concerns was, were the application which I placed in front of you today, and also the meeting minutes back in January of 2012 where the fee was waived, and I've got that for you right now.
I got a call, I know I have.
If you'll look, land use application waivers, you'll note there, Planner Richardson discussed from time to time, the county gave land use changes when Comprehensive Plan was done. That was assigned wrongfully and requested the board to consider these, waiving of these application fees when they come up. He stated that there are not many of them, and they do create a hardship for the owners where property never should have been put in those particular land uses, such as conservation. Upon inquiry by Chairman Williams, Chief Administrator Butler explained that prior to the GIS days, some private lands were classified as conservation lands at no fault to the private landowner. Commissioner Yager motioned to approve this recommendation. Commissioner McDaniel seconded, and the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Is that it?
That's all I have.
And the board voted 3-0, approve.
Yes, sir.
All right, board members?
I'll stand from this.
I do have a comment.
All right, sure.
I did attend the PDRB meeting yesterday morning, and it's always very helpful to attend the meetings, and we do get to listen to the discussion, and the attend the meetings, and we do get to listen to the discussion and, and the background. So I have listened to all of these items. And I just had one comment on this one that I would like to be certain that part of the record is that this was determined back in 2012 by this board, that these lots, all along there, not just Commissioner Macklemore's lot, but all those lots along there are a unique circumstance, and that we did waive the fee regarding these lots. I just want to make sure that we maintain that record going forward so that when another person who has one of these lots comes forward, we have that same consistency. But that's just my only comment, that we, we keep that consistency because this was already fleshed out and determined before this board back in 2012.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Last item to note, the proper process is you've had your public hearings. If the board accepts the recommendations of the PDRB today, what I will do is work with the planner, we'll prepare an ordinance as we have consistently with Florida Statute 163, we'll advertise it, and it'll be introduced to you all to adopt that ordinance at your next meeting.
Sounds good. All right, board members, are you gonna have to, what's the wishes of the board on this? Approve this? What's the wishes of the board? Need a motion to either approve or?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, to approve.
Yes.
And I will second.
Ween, motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Bryan. Any further board discussion on this? But anyone in the audience have any concerns? This doesn't affect Commissioner Macklemore, he just happens to be one. It affects every person that owns property on the Dead Lakes, the Brothers River, the Apalachicola Rivers, any water in Gulf County. All right, anyone from the audience, any concern? All right, now, Commissioner Macklemore, you're gonna have to abstain. Any objection to Commissioner Quinn's motion? The motion passes 3, 1 abstention. Fill out Form, I think it's Form 6 or Form something, and get with, take care of that. All right, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Attorney?
That's all we have for the planning.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Katrina Saunders, come up, please. All right, for the wait.
Oh, that's okay, no problem at all.
And who's your guest today?
I'm Katrina Saunders, the Center Manager for Weewahatchka Medical Center. This is Pat Walker. She is our Outreach and Enrollment Worker. I'm here to give our quarterly update for Weewahatchka Medical Center, one of the federally qualified healthcare centers for Gulf County. I have three items to talk with you about. All of them are community service related. As you know, we are always accepting new patients, but our community service items are for all Gulf County residents. The first is our tobacco cessation classes. Those are held the first Tuesday of every month at the center. So if any, anyone in the county is interested in stopping smoking, we encourage you to call the center and get on the list to come to those meetings. They're very helpful. It's a small group. They're ran, they're run by Big Ben Aheck, and we've had some success with that. The second is, we have a new class starting, and this is a diabetes education class. So if anyone in the county has a family member or themselves have been diagnosed with diabetes, our provider, Destiny Barnes, and our nurse case manager will be holding tobacco, diabetes classes. The first one is October the 15th, and it will be held from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock again at the center. So just call the Weewahatchka Medical Center and go ahead and get signed up for those. Our third item that we want to speak with you about is, we are coming up on open enrollment for the Affordable Care Act insurance. Pat Walker is our Outreach and Enrollment Worker, and she just wants to talk to you about that process and how she can help any community members who need any help with insurance coverage.
Good morning, Pat. Good morning. Excuse me. Yes, open enrollment for the Affordable Healthcare through the marketplace will begin November 1st, 2015, to January 31st, 2016. One of the things that we are able to provide to this community is assistance with the application process and also eligibility to see if they are eligible to participate in the program. This is a service, again, this offered to the entire community, and it will be held, appointments will be held at the Weewahatchka Medical Center, 255 East River Road. I do have flyers, I do have my contact information, and if there's anyone who is interested in applying for healthcare, we can provide them with that service.
Okay. Thank you, dear.
You're welcome.
Questions, here.
Where can we get those, the information, your flowers and your contact number or not? Do you have any of those with you today?
I sure do.
Could I get some, please?
Yes, just one second.
Ms. Saunders, do you have some of the information that you also discussed could we get?
I don't have it with me, but I can get it to you.
Can you email it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any of the board members? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Thomas Herbert, Mr. Linda Apple, is that correct? They're with the Calhoun, they're with Lambert, Herbert. Anyway, this concerns some seismic exploration testing in Calhoun County and Gulf County. Give your name if you would over here, this young lady.
Wilson, thank you. My name is Tom Herbert. I'm a professional geologist with Lampel Herbert Consultants, P.O., Box 10129, Tallahassee, 32302. We've been in business about 37 years here in the state doing oil and gas and all sorts of environmental resource consulting. We're here today to provide background information for our client, which is Choya Petroleum out of Dallas, Texas. It's a small exploration production company who has some lease acreage up in Calhoun and Gulf Counties, and they're proceeding with seismic exploration, which is the first step in oil explo, in the oil exploration process. Now, this is to follow up work that's been done in this area back into the 60s going forward in time, and the technology has improved, and we're hopeful that the seismic testing that we do will image the subsurface. Now, this area of Florida is called the Apalachicola Embayment. It's an, it's a sequence of sediments that's very similar to over in the J Field, so its prospects are very good for finding oil in this area. There have been oil shows from wells drilled back in the 60s and 70s, so that's what's brought us here. We're hoping to start this, we're here to provide background information because there will be some folks up in your district coming to the door, knocking on doors, talking to people, obtaining options and, and perhaps leases for the area. The seismic testing, we're hoping to start late November, this year, of this year. It's sensitive to the river stage elevations on the Apalachicola because a portion of the seismic lines, these are, these are lines of, of information that we're gathering, geologic information, and we're doing this by putting small seismic charges, explosive charges, 100 feet down in shot holes, and we'll be down in the floodplain area drilling with small lightweight equipment, drilling the shot points down in. There will be one hole every 330 feet along 63 line miles of project. There will be a total of about 1,000 shot points. We have licenses, oh, excuse me, we have permits required from the state of Florida for the geophysical process. We have wetlands permits. We were out there yesterday all day with DEP scouting the area for the wetlands, for the environmental resource permit. We have a Corps of Engineers Nationwide Permit 6, which we have to coordinate with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and also the state archaeology folks. We also have a plan from the state wildlife agency for work down there. We also have the state fire marshal. All the people who'll be handling explosives will be licensed by the fire marshal, and we're hoping to start late, late in the, in November. Prior to that, there'll be some discussions with people from the oil company seeking permission. We're expecting that you folks might be getting some phone calls. That's why we're here to give you the advanced knowledge of what's going on. We sent out the complete application to you that we filed with the DEP for the seismic permit, gives a lot of background information, gives the map, the locations, technology, that sort of thing. It is during hunting season, but it's going to be a very rapid process in that the 1,000 shot holes will be drilled in about 10 to 12 days with multiple drilling rigs. We have state observers with every, every drilling rig, so everything is following the proper course of activity that's permitted. We have seismic observers from the state on every, every drill and with every detonation. The shots are detonated sequentially so that you wouldn't have all of them going off at one time. We will provide site security for the area, for the charges. They will sleep, call it sleeping the charges, they'll be in the ground for a couple of weeks. We lay out recording phones, they're called geophones. They're autonomous devices with GPS, with memory, and a very sensitive microphone, it's like a fishing, like going out with a fish finder. You're putting a pulse in the ground, you're recording the signal coming back. These are like having 6,000 transducers out on the ground listening for that signal to come back. And so we'll go down the line and shoot those 1,000 shots. It'll take about two, two and a half, three days to shoot the, shoot the project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, if we have any questions, convince this down, is you're going into North Gulf County and do some seismographic testing looking for oil.
Yes, sir.
What is all the balls out there? When you leave, you gonna leave everything? Or you won't even know you've been there?
Correct. The last thing we do is clean up everything and rake everything out.
I'd say I'm on my little...
When that came up, I was thinking of that. We'll probably be using the campground too, because there's...
Okay, wish you would.
Probably about 80, 80 people coming in, and a lot of them are using campers, fifth wheelers, so they'll be looking for space, and they like to have be centrally located, so I think we'll probably add to your revenue on the campground.
We've got a beautiful ceremony. Glad you know that. All right, laid back.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Have a safe trip back home, Tom. Let's move right along, we have two more before we go into public discussion. Dr. Pat? Yeah, that's you. Come on up, come on.
I'm just about gone, man.
You about gone? All right, make it quick.
I'm gonna be quick.
We might need his vote, so.
I might need your vote, right.
There you go. Come on, Pat.
Pat Hargman, President of Coastal Community Association, 123 Mariner Lane, Port St. Joe, Florida. I've come to you with a request this morning, again relating to the beach restoration project. I want to tell you how much we appreciate the Board of County Commissioners keeping that moving forward and putting it into the DEP pot. We, this is a critical issue for the county, and we looked at the possibility of where all the funding is coming from, and this has been a question right along the line. In looking at the assessment that DEP did on our proposal, I was kind of shocked. We only got 29 out of 120 points from them in terms of the, our particular proposal we put in, and we got zero in, in all the funding categories. We only got, we got 19 zeros, and all of the funding categories were zero. Now, that 29, it doesn't get us up to where we usually are in the, in the ranking of DEP before this goes to the legislature. DEP ranks, goes to the legislature, the legislators decide who gets the monies. Two different things. We need to improve our ranking and before we get to the legislature. And so we, I talked to Michael B. Dabrowski, we're, we're probably somewhere around in the 50% range. We're usually in the 10% range of who they're promoting, who DEP is promoting to go forward. Looking back on January of last year, you voted to put in an MSTU. It's quite complicated, I'm sorry. You put in an MSTU at $8 million. Warren, Jaeger, and TDC and CA went out and started looking for monies that we could match, leveraging some other monies and what have you. And on April 14th, prior to the vote, you made a maximum of $4 million because we could find other funding to come in. What we're asking you for today is to improve the possibility on our state funding and also, by the way, to improve our possibility with the legislators who like to see the private property owners have a stake as well as the county and state. We're asking you to put out another MSTU, and it's gonna have to be timely because we need to get it before the legislature and done, and Jeremy can explain more. But we're asking you to put out another one with a maximum of $4 million for the peninsula residents, exclusive use for the beach restoration project to sunset in 10 years or upon completion of payback of that project. Now, this will begin with the 2017 tax year because of the way it sets up. So that money would start flowing before the project would even possibly be getting to ending. That's our major problem. You're two years out. If we get the project funded, you're still two years out, and we've got homes that are gonna go. It suggests a break down of the three districts, which will allow it to move quickly, as we have before with the Gulf at 50%, the interior at 35, and the bay at 15, and the vote to be held as soon as it possibly can so that we will have that in place before the legislature. Little history, when it, the vote failed because of three votes in the interior. The majority of the Cape residents voted yes on last MSTU. There were two points of confusion on that, or one point of confusion. Because the ballot already had to be presented, the ballot carried the $8 million figure as opposed to the $4 million figure. And the Cape residents were somewhat concerned, and if they voted on that ballot at $8 million, that they would have the $8 million as opposed to the 25, 35% share approximately. So that was one of the things that kept some people from voting yes. The Coastal Community Association will pledge to you that we will get out and work with those 255 voters to give them the logic of why this needs to be done. Without the beach restoration, obviously, we lose the Cape. So that's what we're asking you to do, is to come back. There's 682 properties on the Cape, only 255 voters. We strongly feel that the residents on the Cape or the properties on the Cape should participate with the county, with the state because of their property values being held up, and we just appreciate all you've done up to now, but we're trying to find the monies.
Pat, let me address you just briefly here. Closest, now, the county footed, we, to taxpayers, I say the county taxpayers on this last, what I'm getting at, the closest possibility that you could get this on an election is probably this March presidential coming up.
We have to get it in. We, we can do it, but it would require y'all to pass, to move very, very quickly.
Wait just a minute. Is anyone with a property app, I mean, the supervisor elections office? We gotta...
We gotta set back from that March.
They have a big role in this.
Yeah, the March, they have to set back from the March.
There's so many days, you can't have an election in a timeframe there, and we're October.
It's tight. It's gonna be tight. It'll have to be, it can be rolled out.
Five months, well, I don't know, he's gonna have to get involved in this. Let me turn over here and ask our attorney here, we're getting, Mr. Attorney, can you shed any on this time? The law, we gotta follow the law.
And then Dr. Pat's talked and met with me a bunch of times about it, and we discussed even this morning about getting with Mr. Handland and just looking at the calendar. Next year, you have three elections in March, August, and November. The March date, you'd have to roll it back by law no earlier than 90 days, so you can't come within 90 days of that March primary. So to put a ballot to this electorate out on the Cape, it would have to be 90 days or sooner. So that pushes us into December right now. So if you were to pass a resolution and put it to a referendum of that MSTU, Mr. Hand... So if you were to pass a resolution and put it to a referendum of that MSTU, Mr. Handlin would have to obviously receive yours, send the ballot to Tallahassee, have the language approved, and then send it out and have it all completed by the second week of December. So I don't, I, I didn't have the discussion with whether he could, but that's your window. You can't go in, you can't go past December fifteenth. And I discussed with Dr. Pat, the other window then would be to get on one of these election cycles, either in March, August, or November for various reasons, meaning the economy's a scale and the efficiency, and, and I talked to Mr. Handlin and saying that he already has to perform this function for this community three times next year. If this is something that's going to be considered by this commission, the CCA, Dr. Pat, and I'll be happy to work with Mr. Handlin to find out if he can perform that service in the next forty-five days, it looks like.
Okay, my biggest concern, and yes, I'll come to each one of you, is number one, I'm not going to ask taxpayers to come up again, we just had an election, what, three months ago? Now, three months ago now that we won't have another election. Got from now, December the fifteenth, the closest, don't, Mr. Handlin is, I'm sure he didn't know, but a lot of be factored in here, but I just want that brought one's attention on. Ask taxpayers to put another election if it fails, and then turn around for another one, and for another one, I'm just not gonna do it. Mr. Michael Moore?
And, and I'll be straightforward with you too, I'm not gonna do it either, Dr. Hardman. From what I've read from your printouts and all, you people wanting the whole county to pay for this, that's why I sent you notes now, unless I misread them.
No, sir, that's not what we're asking for. In fact, what I'm asking you to do right now is to allow the property owners out there to foot a third of the bill. I'm asking you to come back and give them, I'm not asking the county to pay.
Okay, with that being said, I don't believe in the project. I, I think it's a money-hungry project, it's gonna continue to cost the county money. We're trying to put in a port, as you well know. Every, every truckload of sand you dump on that beach down on the upper end, I know because I work out there, it ends up on the point down there, right? It's actually closing off our shipping channel now as we speak. So that's gonna be a continuing maintenance problem on that, keeping the channel open for the port. I can't support you.
Well, clearly, there's a problem with the sand, and it's clearly something that has to be addressed. And I've had several people from CCA and others on the Cape contact me and made very good points and are very passionate about this issue. And I, I can't blame people for not voting for it when it had the eight million on the ballot, when they were told it was a four million cap. And I, I also would be, if I was expected to vote, I would be very leery of somebody telling me, well, it's really four, when what I'm marking says eight, so I, I do think that was an issue. We have to, we do have to address the, the beach re-nourishment, but my concern is still the same concern that I have had since the beginning of this, is we need a comprehensive plan. We need a comprehensive plan to get this short-term fix completed, and we need a long-term plan. And I, I have heard many people say that we cannot have a bridge, that a bridge won't work, but I've also heard quite a few people and, and people who are in the science community and they're, they do this for a living, say that the bridge could potentially help resolve the erosion problem and also help the quality of the bay. And I think that's something that we need to look at. If, if you all want to have an opportunity to vote again, to give that, to have the MSTU, I, I think that you should have that opportunity to pay for a portion of the project. But I, I'm afraid that you'll go out and vote again and it won't pass because we don't have a comprehensive plan, and people cannot afford to put this money out every six to seven years. We have to address it, but I, you know, I think that we need to reach out to DOT and see if we can have them look at the potential of putting a bridge there. We put a lot of money into that stump hole. We had in our consent agenda today, two hundred thousand dollars to put sand at the stump hole. I mean, it's a continuing thing, all of the money that we put into the stump hole. So, you know, I would like for the DOT to look at the potential of putting in a bridge and wrap this all into a solution for the Cape. And we, we are going to need to put sand out there, but we need to stop the erosion to the best that we can do it, and we can't just keep talking about it. And Dr. Hardman, I, I would assume that you have in, put together some type of a plan, at least how to pay for the sand in the short term and how to address this problem in the long term.
Yes, and there's been a number of studies to, to address a couple of your things. One, the bridge is sixty million dollars. If, if it breaks through, and that may happen, but it will dramatically change the bay. It may not change it for the better. The studies are there in terms of what would happen, the projection of what would happen, the science is there. It will not in any way create a situation where, according to the studies, that the Cape quits eroding. It will simply break through at that point. And what will occur is the, is it will begin eroding on the bay side as well. So we would have even more erosion problem, probability if it breaks through, and that's what the bridge is about. If you, if it breaks through, you can figure a DOT, how long does it take them to do anything? Eight to ten years before you'd get something out there to open up. The, it is a piece of infrastructure. It will not quit, quit eroding, but you've got to look at it as infrastructure. And one of the other things that we've put forward to DOT, I mean, not, excuse me, to DEP, or actually to the legislature, is some of the breakwater-type things that we have suggested that we will have a way to slow down that erosion. But beaches are going to erode, and it is, it is an infrastructure project. Long-term, those breakwaters, and I'm not, that, breakwater's not the right term, and they're artificial reefs, which actually will serve recreational purpose too. That's gonna slow us down and buy us some time. But I don't think you're ever going to not be renourishing that beach. And the other option is you don't have the beach, you don't have the homes, you have a, quite a crisis in, in financial structure for the county as we lose twenty-five percent of the income. So, I mean, I, I can't, all I'm asking you for right now, I'm, I'm not trying to argue the fact that it needs to be done because that's already pretty well been decided by everyone. Your science, I'll get you the reports on the science so you can see what they're projecting on the bay.
Let me interject just a moment here and say, Dr. Hardman, you came before the board this morning asking the board to bless you with another MSTU.
Yes, sir.
And see if you could hold a special election.
Yes, sir.
Now, that's what.
That's what we're.
You came before the board this morning for, and as far as happen, get the renourished beach, I'm, I'm for that, but I want it done the right way. I don't like my grandchild, build him a little sand castle, three waves will come, then a big one come, wash it and him away, so.
Well, obviously.
We're trying to avoid that, but the main thing is that's what you came here for today. I don't know if we can, I'm just trying to sum it down.
Yes, sir, that's what I'm asking you for, is to get, to get it on the ballot.
And you mentioned, and the reason behind is to try to beat the legislature, which I, are they going in early session this year?
They're going in, in January, so if we can get it.
All right, but Halls is be here and Bill Monford, Senator Monford and Representative Halls, and let me give them their respect, be here, sitting right here, Bundy.
Yes, sir.
Come see him.
Oh, I will be. I've, I've been in their offices a number of times, sir.
All right, let me go over here right quick while we move along. What about?
Ms. Chairman, real quick, had a lot of conversation with Dr. Pat last, last few weeks. When we did the one and only beach nourishment project, it probably took a year for the people on the beach to convince the county commissioner to do it. County commissioner just didn't do it this first time around. And I'm, I'm here straight up, not leaning to the left, not leaning to the right, but at some point in time, if this county commissioner decides to nurse that beach, then you buy into the idea. Something Pat and I was talking about last week, that was just, came up last week and it's gone now. But that was a lot, a piece of land that came up, that could be, could have been purchased for ninety-five thousand dollars, access to the beach, give the public access to the beach for less than a hundred thousand dollars, the return on investment would have been between three and four hundred thousand dollars of DEP money, because the more public access you have. So I, only reason I want to say something right now is, at some point in time, if this board does buy into the idea of nursing the beach. Part of the conversation needs to be how to increase that thirty-five percent that DEP is going to contribute. We'd like to get on up, the maximum they can do is fifty percent, but by getting more access to the beach, we can, we can get a bigger return on the investment. Just want to throw it out, because at some point in time, if the board decides to go that way, we need, we need to look at it.
We, we, I brought that last week, I, I found out about it Wednesday, researched it, got, Michael DeBroski, it was an eighty-nine thousand dollar lot, it had been dropped in value, in, in price for sale, and it would have been passed the boardwalk, which would have been a beautiful poss, probable access for all county residents. It would have brought in three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, that, just that one lot, that eighty-nine thousand dollars from DEP. One of the goals here is to keep bringing the, the DEP portion up so the county portion goes down. And the other issue that always comes up is the FEMA. If we had cobra removed, you wouldn't even be having to address the re-nourishment issue.
Well, we're gonna have to go to federal court.
Yes, sir. So basically, what I'm asking you to do this morning though, is to go ahead and, and start the process and let the attorney start the process to get a D, another MSTU on the ballot. We feel strongly that it will pass with the four million dollars, not the eight billion, and also the fact that the erosion is so obvious out there now that it, it's, it's beyond anybody's doubting that it's gonna occur.
Who's gonna, if it does, if, 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 little word of power, who's gonna pay for it? I can't go back out here. Who's gonna pay for this special election?
It's, you know, basically, it's fifty-one hundred dollars.
But we just paid.
And, and that's the cost of it that, that happened last time, and basically, bottom line is, if you get that and you get the buy-in from the residents, it's saving four million dollars in, in county monies, or county having to find.
Question?
Sure.
Who's gonna come up with the other, it says a thirteen million dollar project, thirteen to twenty million when it's all said and done? We're talking four million from DEP. Where's the rest coming from?
But that's what Warren had identified last, last year, all, Warren.
Mr. Jaeger's not here anymore.
But we had identified, basically, I know, and I promise you, we want somebody in that seat. The, we have identified the, where we can leverage using the BP monies, where we could leverage out with other grants and, and get that county's portion. I think TDC and, and Warren and had identified a number of them that we brought to you whenever we brought to April to get you to go from eight million down to four, that we could identify pots that we could leverage for that, for the county's portion.
So you want to take BP money then?
No, sir.
That's what you just said.
We want to leverage some of the monies that might be coming in, might, might even be that much.
I'm not with it.
Off the note, Ms. Chairman.
I got a question.
Yeah, let's go over here to Commissioner, he's been.
Uh, something's gotta be done, I know that. We gotta do something. My question is, if we do a special election, fifty-one hundred dollars, right?
Yes, sir.
But if we wait till March, how much will it cost us?
I would assume, I would assume nothing. I don't know, I mean.
Zero. Special elections.
And if we, if we did that, then we could always go with the legislators, and I would be stumping that we, we have a, it, it will be out there and is up for the vote, which will please them.
I, I mean, I say let's, let's go that route.
Mr. Butler, if we were to approve it, do we have somewhere to take that fifty-one hundred from, somewhere in the budget, where would the monies come from if we did approve it?
Well, we haven't spent all the BP money yet.
I think we may have today.
But that's an infrastructure money, that, that would be, if you tried to find fifty-one hundred dollars, could it be found? It could be found.
Well, I can completely understand that you, and, and I'll just repeat this to make sure that we get it, you want the commitment for those funds in place so that when you go before the legislature, you could say, we've already committed to spend this out of our own pockets, and that will help you in the process.
That will help the county be able to get the project, big project funded.
Help the project. Um, you know, I, I'm gonna make this motion, but I, I will make the motion that we go forward with the MSTU. And I don't know what you're gonna do if it doesn't pass, if you went this time and it doesn't pass. And, and see, to me, I, I still think it would be nicer to have a full package for those voters to say, if we vote yes, we're paying for, this one's paying this much, and, and the other one's coming out of that. It's still very, it's still very out there in the, in the atmosphere that we think we can leverage the funds, and, and I'm afraid that people still won't vote because they don't have the full package. But I will make the motion because I know it's extremely critical out there, and I know it is a long process, and we not, we need to move forward, but I, I don't think that the, I, I think we need to do more work on, on pulling it together. But my motion's there to go forward with the MSTU.
Now, that excludes special, this is just move on MSTU.
As Dr. Pat is, is requesting.
Fifty-one hundred dollars, correct? That you're asking the taxpayers to pay, correct?
Okay, Commissioner Bryan has placed a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that with discussion real quick.
All right, sir.
I mean, something's gotta be done. I mean, if they want to, they want to tax themselves, I mean, I, I know it didn't pass last time, like Dr. Hardman said, and it was some information that eight million, four million, I might not vote if I seen eight million also, four million, I might would have voted. So the possibility that it, it could pass, if it don't pass, then we, we back in the same position, but still, something's gonna have to be done on the Cape regardless. Regardless, if it passes, if doesn't, if it don't pass, something's gonna have to be done on the Cape, so. I wish we could wait, so, so, so if I'm understanding the motion right, if we move forward, this, this is for a special election, not for the March election.
That's right.
Dollars to taxpayer.
The fifty-one hundred, I'm not, I don't want to spend it again here, but the fifty-one hundred would be an investment to getting these, these dollars that are out there come into this project, which, you know, would, would be a tremendous help, and we are, it is a slow process, but it, it comes back to having things done properly and thinking them through, and we were rushed when we did it last time. And I said that, you know, this, why is this a rush? It's not a rush, we've been talking about it for years. Well, we have been talking about it for years, but the process of going out for the MSTU was rushed, and the, the figures were wrong, and so here we are again. But it, it's, we're between a rock and a hard place, something has to be done about it, and I would rather us bring in dollars from outside than having to fund it here.
I can't disagree, you know, I, I agree. I think we, I hate to say this, but I, I think we should go on and make the fifty-one hundred dollar investment and, and hope and pray that we're gonna get a return on that investment this time. My motion stands, I mean, my second stands.
All right, we're still in discussion. Dr. Hardman?
Yes, sir.
I'm fixing the Cape. My concern, I don't mind, why in the world can't we wait to put it on the March election? Now, that bunch in Tallahassee, let me tell you about them, they go down there to Andrew's little watering hole.
No, sir.
That's where they discuss all the business, and they'll meet in January, but they'll call a special session and settle ninety percent of the state's business. Now, why we're gonna have to have, and we made the, the, what's his name down there? The supervisor elections might tell you, no, you're out, you can't do it before then. Don't mind MSTU, and I don't mind helping the people, but maybe we just wait till March and put it on that presidential ballot, don't cost us anything and give time to hassle it around a little, because if it fails, that, that's my only concern, I want to help the people.
All right, sir, I'm, I'm, hear you asking for a compromise, and I'm.
That's what I'm asking for.
Yes, sir. I don't want to spend taxpayer money either, and I think if we have it on the ballot, I, I can.
We're talking about a special ballot? We talk about a special ballot or on this general ballot, we're gonna have March. Now that's what we, five of them are going with.
Can I have a little brief consultation with the question over here?
Yeah, just my general observations, if it's the will of the commission to recommend to go and explore it, I mean, I'll certainly work on it, I'll reach out to Mr. Hanlon and find out if it's feasible. That's the most important question is can it be done on the calendar? Second question is if you're gonna appropriate the funds, then we have to advertise it, we have to have a public hearing, you need to adopt the resolution, you need to draft the ballot referendum, we need to provide it to the supervisor of election, supervisor of election needs to then send it to Tallahassee, and the state supervisor needs to approve that ballot language, send it back down, he needs to package it up for two-hundred-and-fifty people, send it out, give them a deadline, and get it all back in. So if that can be done in the short window that we have, and I know the commissioner said it was rushed last year, this is a shorter window than what you did it in last year. So if it can be and you tell us to move accordingly, we can go and see if it can be done. But I don't have that from Mr. Hanlon, I know Dr. Pat had intended to, and I think she's tried to work with John, we can get you those answers.
I agree. I would, I think we're gonna be tight pressed to try to get it in before the, if we have it on the ballot, on the vote, I think I can argue with legislators that we have, have it out there and we're gonna have vested interest. That's, that's one of the things they're interested in. So I, I will, I will, I will give a compromise if you would change yours and let it go to the, to the ballot that will, in March. March?
Second week of March.
That way it won't cost five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
I'm still not with you.
Boy, that's gonna air me four times.
No, I'm still not with you. Be clear on this, we, I sit here and did this project years ago, eight, what, ten years ago, we spent twenty million dollars. Where did it go? It went right around the point. I, I, I can't support something that you just have to keep dipping, throwing money into.
But the county has recouped more than twenty million dollars in tax revenue from that process, and the fact that the houses are still standing.
I understand that, but it's more involved right now because we're trying to get this port in here, that, that's gonna be a big expense for us, as I'm saying. I'm just letting you know where I'm at, where I'm staying. I'm not gonna support this beach rednourishment project from here tomorrow right on.
Yes, sir.
So don't waste your time with me. Okay?
Okay, so I will withdraw that motion. So what you're asking for is a motion for us to allow you to go forward with the vote for the MSTU on the March ballot. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so then I will make that motion.
With the things that I outlined for you, the, the four million.
And you can still, where you, one from them say, hey, we're moving.
That's right.
Oh, we're moving.
And I want to make it clear too that I, I am in agreement to allow the folks down on the Cape to vote to tax themselves, to, to put some money out there to go forward, but I still think that we need to work on the other issues of where the other money's coming from, and, and I'm with Commissioner McLemore on this, that we can't just fund it, and every six to seven years we're in the same boat. We have to address that issue, and we have to work on the things that get you more points than access, whatever gets us the more points, then we need to work on those. But we need to work on them all along, we need to have a plan. It needs to be out in the open so we all know what we're working towards.
Good deal, all right. We have a motion by Commissioner Bryan. Get a second on that.
Yes, sir, I second that motion.
Got it right over here, Commissioner. You have further board discussion? Any, any publics? Yeah, I am, I'm going to the public here. Further with the board here, now we go to the public.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Patty, coming back to you.
Yeah, yeah, that's me. Name is Roland Shaffer, seventy-six oh nine Shoreline Drive, on the peninsula, it's not a Cape, it's a peninsula. I'm very concerned about this, naturally, I live there. I have a nice dune in front of my house, I don't want it to go away, and I know all kinds of tax monies are lost if it goes away. By the way, I don't mind paying high taxes, I live on the most beautiful, beautiful spots in the world, I should be paying high taxes. But I'm, I'm not concerned about the taxes, and I know the loss is big for the county, and taxes will go up everywhere, but I'm concerned about the peninsula. And I, I just, I don't believe a bridge is ever gonna happen. As soon as that's proposed, I think that environmental groups, the Greenpeace, National Wildlife, they'll, they'll be here, and the, the ecology of the bay should never be changed. It's a breeding ground for many, many things, including sharks, but sharks are needed in the world. So I'm very worried if we get a major hurricane through there. Category three, we're gonna lose a lot unless we get some sand out there for this hurricane to grind away at. And if the peninsula goes away completely, category four, guess where the hurricane's gonna hit next time? Okay, that's all I'm saying, we need to do this.
We're trying to work, we've been working on this for, I know for five years as I've been on this board and.
Thank you.
All before. All right, got a motion, second by Commissioner, thank you, Dr. Hartman, was that, okay. Anyone else in the audience?
No opposition, I just wanted to clarify, you have one person.
Oh, I'm sorry, young man, I didn't see you.
As, as he comes forward, Mr. Chairman, I understand that the motion today is instructing staff to move forward to prepare the resolution, the public hearing. You're not passing the MSTU today to, to put it on the ballot, it has to come before you in a publicly noticed meeting, not on part of your agenda, so I'll prepare that for your next meeting.
Do I need to amend, or?
I, I mean, I, I understand the instruction.
To move forward.
Move forward to the next step to get it on, in, in front of you in form of a referendum.
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm Roland Wilson, seventy-one fifty-one, Cape San Blas Road. I hadn't intended to peek on this this afternoon, and I, or now this afternoon, I came for another purpose. I was on initial rednourishment project, the state at that time DOT was supposed to have done a study for a bridge out there. All the other agencies were supposed to check on the bay itself, the effects and whatever. Probability is it never got done. The only true solution, if you, to my way of thinking, if you get down to it, is a bridge right there. The main currents come in and split right there, and it's gonna continue to go both ways until you let it go as it did a couple of hundred years ago. You're fighting the currents in the water, you're not gonna win, I don't care what you do. If you look at all the old charts, all the old maps, hundred, hundred and fifty, two hundred years ago, water went freely back and forth in the bay. It didn't have this canal that had been cut to the intercoastal waterway. That's part of the problem with the bay right now. If you let the natural flow work like it used to, you'll eliminate a lot of this problem.
All right, sir, thank you, sir. I do think we have a motion on the floor for a call for, anybody else in the public? All right, any opposition to motion? All right, motion passed, three to one. All right, Pete, are you still around?
I got, I got.
You brought me a sandwich, but now, come on up.
I've got the lead.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Pete Berger, Indian Pass.
Pete Berger, two-six-two-four, Indian Pass Road. I really wanted to talk about five minutes about the proposal to expand the road in Indian Pass, but this morning I took some photographs, and I thought you ought to see them.
Yeah, pass, ma'am.
This is not related to what I want to talk about, but there's an explosion of structures on our beach that the Leave No Trace Act would have shut down the people who were forcing. And there's an explosion of people living in trailers in Indian Pass and other places along Thirty A that people have discovered they can live in a mobile house and not pay taxes, and it's happening all over the area, and we're concerned about it. That one in Money Bayou, for example, that, that can't enhance the values of the houses in Treasure Drive and the related area, and the one in Indian Pass is just like what's happening over and over and over, and I wanted you to be concerned about it. I came to ask you to please consider, there's a plan to expand the road in Indian Pass. We have a country road there and a close-knit community of high-type people who are very similar in the way they think, and I have talked to neighbor after neighbor after neighbor, and there are only two people I've identified out of the thirty-five residents that live in the area, full-time residents, and that's Ms. Betty McLemore and Jimmy. Well, Ms. Betty didn't know that there's requirements for the width of trailer, she's concerned about the big boats that are going by her house, and she's thinking they may hit one another if two of them have to go like this. Well, there are rules that say they can't exceed eight feet. We got a ten-foot wide road, plenty wide enough, that puts feet between anybody passing. But we have a problem with, with speeding on the newly-built Thirty A, people pass me at sixty and seventy and eighty miles an hour in the forty-five mile an hour zone. If we do that to Indian Pass, we're gonna kill somebody. We'd like to ask you to please reconsider the thought of having Indian Pass community changed to that extent. Please don't build a superhighway like we have out on Thirty A because we're gonna kill somebody.
Photograph.
These photographs are.
Now we off on the highway.
These photographs are just new information, not related to the, my request, that you please reconsider rebuilding Indian Pass. We'd like it to stay the way it is. I've discussed this with Mr. Yeager numerous times, and he's unyielding. He thinks that spending money is a good idea, and we do not.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for letting me talk.
All right, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Far for the late. All right, let's move along. Down to item number ten, public discussion. Anyone in the public have anything before the board? I think we've discussed about everything possible. Here we go, come on, young man.
Yep, one more time.
All right, sir, it'll take time for you.
Name again, or?
Yes, sir. Roland Wilson, seventy-one fifty-one, Cape San Blas Road.
Come back over here to you. All right, here.
Yep. What I really came for today is a situation you're trying to blame on Waste Pro that you created. When Waste Pro first came on the, in the county with the waste program, they were in favor, and I am too, countywide mandatory garbage collection. They offered roadside yard debris pickup at five dollars extra per month. That gains, gains you a four-foot by four-foot by two-foot-high pile, thirty-two cubic feet. There was one district commissioner, now bear in mind, you all are district commissioners, really not a county commissioner, one district commissioner made a point that his people couldn't afford to pay garbage collection fees. Now what they do with their fees, I don't know, with their garbage. Go somewhere. In the process, he convinced enough of you to say no to the original program with Waste Pro. It then came back on us that Waste Pro would do a selective garbage pickup like it had been done with Waste Management, but they would offer a separate container for yard debris, which is a thirteen cubic foot container, at eight dollars a month. Because of you, it cost us three dollars more a month and two-thirds less ability to have stuff picked up. Don't blame Waste Pro for yard debris, you're the ones that created the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Make a motion.
Well, I, I do want to comment, and I, I do agree with what Mr. Wilson said regarding the way that, that those events happened. However, I, we do have other issues with the Waste Pro contract, and I know our, our attorney has told us that, that they are in compliance with paying our, their liquidated damages. But the, the way that I look at it is this contract required them to build a transfer station and a road by December thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen, and we are now at the end of September. Nothing has been built. So they made a business decision to pay twenty-five thousand dollars to avoid having to put out the money that it would cost to build a transfer station to, to prepare the site and build the road. And they can pay that twenty-five thousand and continue on and avoid having to build that structure. So this is a problem, and they've got this contract, that was one of the main points that we based it on, was that they would build this transfer station because we had to have it. We've closed our landfill, we were required to close our landfill. So what I would like to ask, ask this board to do, and I'm willing to put it in a motion, that we either call Waste Pro in default of their contract for not building this transfer station and road and, and not being on time, they're almost, we're, we're closing in on a year here, and there's no way they could even have it done by the end of the year, they haven't even started. So either we call them in default and we terminate this contract and go out for bid again, or we.
I think there's, I think they're trying to tell you that they're not recording, Commissioner. I just want to get your attention.
I apologize for interrupting, but we are not recording just for your information, we've got a computer issue.
Mr. Kent is recording it, so.
Okay. Or we ask Waste Pro, or require Waste Pro, to pick up the garbage, the yard debris, at the rate that we have now, in an effort to continue on with this delay. Frankly, that's really not, that is not much considering the delay. In, in the private sector, if they had a delay like this on building the structure that we have required them to build, it is a huge part of the contract. If, if this happened in the private sector, this would have been over long ago, and it's our responsibility in representing the public. So they need to come to the table, we need to either rebid this, I think we could get a better deal if we rebid it, or they need to start picking up that yard debris again under the rate that we have. And I'm gonna put that in a motion.
Do you want to renegotiate this contract?
I, the motion is that we declare that Waste Pro is in default of the contract, and if they don't want to, well, they, they can't, they cannot come out of default, they, they are so far behind. This board needs to hold their feet to the fire, and we, we either need to call them into default and terminate the contract and rebid, or we need to have them pick up the yard debris under the rates that they're charging now. And, and Mr. Chairman, I'd love to hear your thoughts on it. I've brought this up every meeting, every meeting I bring this issue up, and, and we get nowhere, but, and they just continue on. We're, we're September twenty-second, and they were supposed to have all of this completed December thirty-first of last year. And what about Waste Management? They bid on this contract too, but we gave this contract to Waste Pro, and they have not lived up to what they said they would do. That's a lot of money.
Been over this a lot, we'll go back again. Waste Management did not, there was three parts to the contract. Waste Management did not bid on all the parts, they, they just did not. McLemore said here for twenty minutes, he says, I hate to, but we have no choice, the ones that met it. Now, Waste Pro is not costing us one penny. Every day where I live, those trucks are going by transporting garbage, or debris, let me get the right word, debris, out of Gulf County on their trucks. When they get their compact station, it'll be better. Now, we're in the process of closing a big landfill out there. That landfill, there's gonna be trucks on that road, weighs from thirty to fifty thousand or maybe sixty thousand pounds. I, my personal, where I'm going is, I hope that Waste Pro delays on paving that road until we get through, because if they go. we get through, because if they go pave it right now and we put all those massive dump trucks on there, then the taxpayers are going to have to go in there and repave it. That's the whole thing. I don't have any problem as far as this gentleman over here in the district I represent, and I've said this, start cleaning up behind yourself. Our yard debris and our limb debris has went to just about zero. Now, I'll agree with you. I ride by and there'd be a couch slung out, a commode slung out. That's nothing to do with Waste Pro, Waste Man, or Waste whoever. They're not going to pick up your couches and your mattresses. That's what just galls me, or washing machines backed up and thrown in the ditch. That's the part that bothers me. But the people in the district that I represent and I ride around, I'm going all the district, they've kind of caught on to the fact that they have to take responsibility and clean up their limbs. We've got a landfill out there that can carry it too, but, you know, going to manage it, the majority of the people, I think, it does, not all, but they do. As far, I don't see household garbage scattered everywhere. That's what, you know, the contract was household. And honestly, the people out, I rode out on the Cape the other day, I didn't see any, you know, repiles where people had just backed up and thrown it out in the ditch. I don't see it.
You will see some where it's in the fall of the county, there was not sufficient information put out about the end of county yard debris.
Okay. All right, sir. But we got to address this. Okay, but you asked my opinion. No, I think that Waste Pro, you know, you know yourself, they had environmental issues out there. Instead of going with a local, and I'm not pushing any engineer, instead of going with somebody that knows Northwest Florida, they went with some outfit out of South Florida that doesn't know jack doodle about the soil, the terrain, or anything in this area. So, that just throws it, it's just one thing after another's cause is.
Mr. Chairman, if it makes sense to delay paving the road, that has nothing to do with building the actual facility, and again, it's a major part of their contract to build that facility so that we have that facility. Now, how long are you going to let them go without paving it? And as far as them using local contractor, not using local contractor, they have environmental issues, those are their issues, not the county's issues. And we're supposed to be representing, who do you represent? Waste Pro or the county taxpayers? You need to hold their feet to the fire.
I think they're holding under all the obligations and everything that's happened. They're out there working now. They're working. You think they'd like to have to haul that when they could compress it down and get it all on one truck to three?
That's not the test.
Well, I mean, you're against Waste Pro. We all know that, and but if we go fire them, who we going to get to do our garbage?
Let me make it clear. I'm not against Waste Pro. I don't have, I don't have any issues with Waste Pro. I have no personal issue with Waste Pro, but I am for the people of this county and the taxpayers.
I am too. All right, now, you have a motion to declare that Waste Pro is in default.
For failure to construct the transfer station.
Or failure to construct, all right, transfer station. Okay, do I hear a second to that motion?
I do want to say something before we call for the vote.
Sure. I mean, you're going to second the motion for discussion, or motion's on the floor?
What's the most, what's your motion again? Want to terminate?
I would call them in default.
You can second for discussion.
Yeah, I'll second for discussion.
All right, okay, you can go that route.
My question is, since we got all the problem with the debris, all right, from my understanding, Waste Pro is giving us a credit for the tonnage or something. Am I correct? Is it any way, I mean, since we got crews that are out working, I know they can't get it all, but could our crews pick up some of that trash, debris, couches, refriger, whatever out there on the sides of the road? Could our crews pick it up, take it to the landfill? It counts, it doesn't cost us anything, correct? I mean, could that, could, could we help eliminate at least a part of this issue? Could we, I mean, somehow help eliminate some of this issue?
See, in this, let me clarify you there, say it. In this, with Waste Pro, with this delay, they have given us X number of tons until they come online. Once they get this facility, which they're working on it right now and get it, then we off the table. We're no different. Right now, that's part of this delay part, is that we do still have, now, the landfill officially closed to the public January the first of this year, but we haven't sent DEP, they have officially, it's still our use, and for them, they're using our scale house and all. But, no, we're getting something out of this. We surely are.
We are not.
Mr. Chairman?
We are. Yes, sir.
Mr. Commissioner Quinn had a question, and since the commission has a motion on the table. You have two years of multiple issues that you've all put into this discussion, okay? With regards to tonnage and a credit, you are receiving that right now for leasing the Scale House site. Reason you're leasing the Scale House site and getting sixty tons per month is because they don't have the transfer facility done. You also have in an amended contract that this commission instructed the staff to work on for a year is to negotiate roadside pickup. The county staff did that. We executed a contract with the vendor that was responsive, and the vendor prepared and began to do that. The county commission then instructed staff to go back and negotiate an amendment to the contract to remove that provision from that for roadside debris. The third issue is with regards to the transfer station. The contract speaks specifically to liquidated damages for lack of performance under the contract. The contract is there to be flexible for the, in the event that something's not done, as Commissioner Quinn spoke about today. If there's spillage on a truck, there's a fine for it. The county commission instructed us to go back and work on removing the roadside pickup from the vendor and also negotiate a lease for the Scale House site and also get into a long-term lease for the five-acre site. The county staff has done each of those things that the commission's instructed us to do. There are two different things. The tonnage is separate and apart from liquidated damages. The other thing I don't want to do is discuss litigation strategy, and I know Commissioner O'Brien's an attorney, but if we're going to sit here and discuss what they haven't built the transfer station, okay? One of the logical questions, and I would put it back, and I'd be happy to discuss it individually with each of you, is, and I don't have the answer to it because I don't have the file, I don't have to have the ability to review it, but then what are the damages to the county? And that is a logical question. So, one of the things as an attorney we have to look at is if they breach the contract and they're liable, what are the damages that are actionable that we could pursue? Right now, we're collecting liquidated damages for the lack of that site being built. The question is, what is the county paying for right now for the lack of that transfer station being built? I'm not aware of what county costs they're incurring right now. I don't, I don't know that. I don't have that, but it would be something I'd have to look at, and I'd come back with a recommendation to each of you commissioners. And Commissioner, I know you're smiling, but these are questions I don't have today, and I know you have a motion to default them under the contract. The contract as it stands with the liquidated damages was agreed to by the county. We executed it, and then the county instructed us to go back and negotiate it again, and we've done that. We are billing them on a quarterly basis. They do have a site that they're borrowing, they're leasing from us, but if you're going to move in this direction, I'd ask for the ability at least to review the various topics that you brought up today, because there, as I said, it's a two-year process and it's multiple issues. And if you're saying that the road and the transfer station not being done is grounds for default, then I will take your instructions. I'll go back and review the contract. I'll look at the fact pattern, and I'll put them on notice pursuant to the contract. But obviously, taking it to its final conclusion would be to break the contract and pursue another vendor to execute on the bond that they had to perform, which would mean that we would take the money from the bond if it was just turned over to the county, go out and buy the trucks and the equipment and the labor, and go through and go into business ourselves. That's the protection that the bond affords this municipality over an eleven-year agreement. So, Waste Pro, then, we'd execute on their bond, and if it was deemed that that bond was, we could perform upon it, we'd go out into the trash business ourselves tomorrow. So, I would caution the council, the commission, to move cautiously as we go down this. You can't simply go into the trash business tomorrow. And right now, they're operating out of our scale house, but the costs, as I understand them, and again, I don't have it in front of me, but they're incurring these additional costs, not only paying the county, but they're operating at an increased cost themselves out of our temporary location until they have the site done. So, I'd be happy to answer more questions about it, but you're hitting on about six or seven different subjects. There's a contract, there's an amendment to the contract, there's two leases, they're performing, and they're also paying. So, and again, I'd encourage each of you commissioners to talk to me one-on-one about it because it's not prudent for us to discuss a litigation strategy if you're talking about defaulting on a contract until you have all the facts in front of you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I will alter my motion to direct the attorney to conduct the review that he just discussed and report back to the board. That's how I will alter my motion.
Okay, we had a motion over here for discussion on the original motion. Now, you're altering the motion.
So, you're altering the motion, allow the attorney to go out and-
Review the contract as he just discussed and come back and report. I agree with what Mr. Novak has said, that we have made changes, and that's back on this board. This board has made changes to the contract. It's taken the various actions that Mr. Novak has laid out, and that's an issue for this board. We cannot, and we do this regularly with contractors. We bend over backwards, we give the extra time, we're continually delaying, and this is a huge expense, and at some point, you have to stand up. You know, you're saying I'm against Waste Pro. I think you're extremely for Waste Pro. I'm not for or against Waste Pro, but this is a business, and we need to conduct it like a business. So, I'm sorry, Commissioner, but my motion is that we allow the attorney to go, go and look at the contract regarding potential default for failure to construct the transfer station and roadway. I understand that there's a reason, a potential reason for delaying the roadway, but there's no reason to delay the transfer station.
I don't have no issue, no issue, I don't have no issue with Waste Pro either. What I do have issue with is like some of the things I discussed, you know, about the leakage. I mean, I don't know if y'all looked at the roads when they come through and they stop and you pick your trash up, and all of a sudden, when it's driving off, you can tell which way the truck is going and where it went to. I don't know if you noticed that, but the roads, and it'd be smelly. And so, I mean, no issue with Waste Pro. I mean, with Waste Pro, what they need to do is, like you said, they need to, they need to get up to par on some of these things. I mean, I can't argue with the commissioner. My issue right now is, if we're getting this, I mean, is it possible to use the crews to pick up the, because I, I get tired of seeing refrigerators and all this stuff on the side of the road and in the ditches and the mattresses. If we get, if we are getting credit, could we have the crews pick these things up? It's not going to take sixty, sixty tons. Could we have the crews pick some of this stuff up to make our neighborhoods, our community look decent? That's all I'm asking. Could we, you know, could we have the crews grab some of these things, take them to the way, take them out there to the landfill and dump, so we can clean up our communities?
All right, now, we got to first address this motion. Motion.
I got no issue with the commissioner's motion. I stick to my second. I second that motion because I think sometimes you have to put the fire, you know, you've got to light the fire behind some people sometimes, and this might be one of the things we might have to do. So, I'll stick with my second.
All right, your second stands. All right, only other discussion, just for clarification, I back whoever the board supports. The board went out unanimously vote, I think it wasn't unanimous, I think we had one abstention of Waste Pro, and so I'll stay with Waste Pro until we decide to go otherwise. If we get somebody else, I'll back them too. But, all right, the motion's on the floor. Any other further discussion? Anyone out here in the audience? All right, what's the vote? How do you vote? You for or how you vote?
For.
And I'll vote against. Okay, that's it. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone? Now, you want to come back with this limb pickup? I'll give you, all right.
I mean, Mr. Butler, is there anything we could do?
Yeah, we can work with this guy right over here and take care of that. We don't have to.
I would say, the county commission has agreed multiple times and go back to the community and clean up. If it's the board's desire for us to go through and pick that up, that's what we're going to do. So, if this board says, "Do it again," we'll go through it again and do it. We have typically what we're doing, we're saving that tonnage for when public works goes out and they cut roadside, right-ofways, and one thing or another, we have to get rid of it, but we can do it this way, too. If the board so desires, we can, we can pick it up.
If I may comment, I'll say that I know with, in my district, I've got two work crews, and they are already overloaded. They cannot keep up with everything in my district with mowing and all of the parks. I know we had a work crew cut by the state, and it's something that we can, I guess, attempt, but I think it's going to be a huge burden upon them to try to pick that up again.
Well, I'm not, I mean, I'm not saying that they should do it, you know, every, I mean, every day. I think every, once in a while, you see some stuff, then they need to pick it up. I mean, I just think it'd be good for, I mean, I mean, it's your call. I think each commissioner should make that call. If you, if the commissioner's satisfied with, you know, with the refrigerators and stuff being, then I think it's up, and then the commissioner make that call for their district. But I, I just don't, for my district, I want them to pick that stuff up, because I don't have, I don't have a lot of grass cutting and, you know, stuff going. I mean, we cut, we cut a lot of grass, but not as much as, you know, some of you all's district. But, I mean, for my area, I would want those things picked up if they run into that situation.
And I do think we have an issue with, a little bit of an issue with education, communication, getting the word out, and that has been an issue all along since we changed how we've been operating with the yard debris pickup. I know some people have complained about the signs that have been put out, no dumping on the right-ofway. That is an effort to communicate for people who have always put their limbs in a certain area, that it's not supposed to be placed there, and it's not something that, you know, that is a permanent thing. They will move those signs around, and it is an effort by our, by our Public Works Department to communicate to the folks that it's not, you're not allowed to dump on the right-ofway. And that's a big part of it, but I still think that we have an overall problem that we have to address with this trash pickup, and we need to move to mandatory pickup. Everyone should be paying for trash pickup, and I've said that repeatedly, and I continue to have that position. And once we move to mandatory garbage pickup, I believe these issues will be resolved.
Tell you what I do. I meet with my people every morning. I phone, if I'm in public. I asked, two weeks ago, I had to go out and get two couches out of a ditch, throwed in a drain because I'd had the Florida Department of Health would have got involved. So, times you have to do that. My work crew picks it up, they don't go on private property. They pick it up, they carry it to a staging area. Vehicles coming down, they toss them on. But, yeah, once in a while, you're going to have to get a couch. We want to go out on industrial, you're going to have to do that. Go back to it, and they're going to break the habit and go back to the old habits. Right now, we've kind of got them turned around. You're not going to stop all of it, but we've got a big lion's share of this limbs on the right-ofway and these contractors going out here, it's paid to carry it to the landfill. Instead of dumping it in the ditch, you and I and these people are paying for it. We've kind of got a handle on that, because why? We give it time and do a little education to work. That's all I got to say. If you want you, I think, you have that. This man right over here can do, say, once a quarter, make a round, but not every week out there.
No, no, no.
Eating our lunch, all right? Anything else? I hear a motion to adjourn. Thank you, good people.
Second.
Move out of here.